Do you have your mic on?
Better get that done. Ten-four. Okay, everyone ready? We'll call to order a special meeting of the planning commission for the town of Superior. Can we have the roll call please?
Chairperson Jim Sawtell.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Robert Momarts.
Here.
Commissioners Joanne Eaton.
Here.
Lois Sardan here.
Mark Laces.
Here.
Jerry Malia.
Here.
Jason Reese. Tom Ricker. Anthony Stewart.
Here.
Planner Fred Fox. Attorney Liz Cross.
Here.
Associate Planner Stephen Williams.
Here.
Okay, thank you, fellas. First item is approval of the agenda. Has everybody reviewed it? We have a motion to approve.
I move to approve.
Commissioner Eaton, second. Commissioner Momarts. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried. Next item is public comment on the consent agenda or non-agenda items. Any public comment on the consent agenda or non-agenda items? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Next item is the consent agenda and the minutes of the January five, 2016 meeting. So everybody had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any changes, edits? No?
We have a motion to approve.
I move to approve. Commissioner Laces, second.
Second.
Commissioner Momarts, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing and approval of a resolution recommending the approval of the Plan Development Plan, number three, and review and comment on vested property rights for the Superior Town Center. Public hearing on the agenda item is open. Is there proof of publication for the public hearing?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Does the applicant have a presentation?
Can we actually start with staff presentation?
That would be fine if that's all right. We can go ahead with staff presentation.
Stephen Williams, staff planner. There's a lot to kind of cover tonight, so I just want to outline it for everyone, and it's similar to what was written in my staff memo. We'll start with recapping the November twenty fifteen hearing that was held on this PD amendment, and then we'll begin discussing the current proposals, so we'll kind of break it up into two parts. If you guys have questions along the way, feel free to interrupt me. The November twenty fifteen PD approval proposed several adjustments to the layout of the town center and primarily focused on the town core. Those adjustments can be summarized as follows. Is there a way to turn off the lights so we can see it a little better? Thanks. So the primary change, I guess, beginning with the shifting of Town Square to right in front of the Boulder Valley Ice Facility. We also discussed shifting the alignment of Coal Creek, or Creekview Way, excuse me, so that shifted up, and the development on the north side of it shifted to the south, aside from Block Four there. Also, just the general adjustments to the geometry and streets around the Town Square, which included narrowing the promenade from seventy feet down to forty-five feet. Another significant change was the amendment to the land use designations. So you see the yellow here was just residential uses, and the change was made, or the change was proposed for a flex use to be designated in the town core so that there was more opportunity for commercial type of development. Update, a couple of updates also occurred to street sections, and these primarily involved Main Street, so, and that included the tabling of Main Street, so Main Street became curbless and more dynamic, I guess is the best way to put it, for two blocks between Marshall Road and Superior Drive, thank you. And then Creekview Way also didn't have a street section before, so that street section was introduced. The other update there was the Bill Two and setback designations to mirror, to basically mirror the new layouts, and then to achieve greater consistency with the design guidelines. Finally, the last primary change that was considered in November was a building mass diagram update to clarify that ninety-foot-tall hotel was permissible in Planning Area Two per the associated design guidelines. This last request didn't get a ton of attention, I guess, at the last meeting, so I just wanted to kind of clarify what exactly was being proposed. The applicant is noting that design guidelines on page one-nine allow for the construction of ninety-foot-tall hotels within Planning Area Two, which is this, this is better, are more clearly designated now, these planning areas. This is Area One, this is Area Two, and down here is Area Three. So the proposal was basically suggesting that the design guidelines say that there's a ninety-foot-tall hotel allowed within Planning Area Two. This contrasts with what's allowed per the building mass approval sheet in the PD set. This building mass approval, or that building mass, building mass limitation basically said that the tallest structure allowance within this area was seventy-five feet, and it's shown in this circle here, so it's just limited to that block. And that, so basically, the other massing limitation within this area is the next highest one, sixty-five feet. So just, just so we can clarify, I guess, what that full change is proposed, that note would allow, whoops, that note would allow a ninety-foot-tall hotel anywhere within Planning Area Two. Through the course of that November review, the applicant also provided two exhibits to help explain how the blocks, tracks, and rides-away were proposed to change. Exhibit A here details the acreage of each specific block, lot, and tract, and illustrates how each is either proposed to change through this review, or has already changed through a prior plating process or FDB process. This table also conveys that the current changes to partial dimensions and configurations are confined to Planning Area Two. Exhibit B was also provided to help illustrate that the two-hundred-and-ten-foot-by-four-hundred-foot athletic field that had been discussed for Track B, which is also referred to as Park Two, could still fit, given the proposed realignment of Creekview Way to the north. And in summary, the Planning Commission deliberated on November's proposed changes and elected to recommend approval of the PD amendment with the conditions outlined in staff's recommendation, which are detailed over this slide and the next slide. Staff's updated memo tracks whether these conditions and associated technical corrections have been addressed. Many of them have been resolved. In other instances, matters that merit, may merit conditions have been highlighted in staff's analysis. Planning Commission can determine whether or not it's appropriate to retain or reply, or apply any of the, any new conditions. Concerning Condition One, all but one technical correction has been made. That lone correction that was not made has been carried over to this PD review and relates to clarifying a note in the building mass diagram. The vested rights language requested by staff in Condition Two has been added to satisfy Condition Three, and note has been added to clarify that dedications of ride-away will need to be, will be needed on subsequent plaques. Regarding Condition Four, staff's analysis now clarifies when additional height analysis will be acquired, will be required either by the PD or through the design guidelines, and suggests that additional solar analysis can be required through subsequent FDB reviews as necessary. Town's parks, open space, and recreation staff is currently working on final development plans for Parks One and Two. These final development plans are expected for this year and expected to proceed final development plan applications for Creekview Way, which largely allay staff's concerns regarding Condition Number Five. Condition Number Six relates to a pond. The applicant has explained that the pond was not intended for detention, even though it was labeled that way, but rather it was planned to be used for water quality. Consequently, resizing the pond should not be a necessary side effect, I guess, of Block Three increasing, and then that's pretty slight in size, as is. So the plan, the plan sheets have been updated to clarify the use of this, this pond as a water quality facility. Regarding Condition Seven, Note Five on the land use block diagram was removed as requested, so that condition's been satisfied. A note has also been added to clarify that the Bill Two setback requirement for the southern line of Lot Three, Block One, will be dependent upon floodplain requirements that are needed to, to be met based on a pending floodplain study, which satisfies Condition Eight. And the applicant has agreed to a thirty-two-foot height allowance and a one-to-three-story massing limitation for Block Four, so Condition Nine's already been satisfied, and those updates have been reflected in this plan supplemental. And Condition Ten has been met, as Planning Areas One, Two, and Three have been identified through the revised supplemental. So this concludes staff's summary of the November twenty fifteen meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions now, or I can proceed with the analysis of the new changes through this PDU approval, or proposal, excuse me.
All right, thanks, Stephen. Do any members of the commission have questions for staff? I have one.
Okay.
If you could go back to that prior slide, Stephen, that you, if I understood you correctly, said there were some issues with item number one, there was one issue that hadn't been met with respect to the building mass, is that right?
Yeah, there was just one technical correction that hadn't been addressed yet, and so we just carried it over as a correction now, and that relates to just some wording that wasn't entirely clear. So it was, it was written previously as the building mass diagram, there's a note, Note Four, that says the three stories will be the maximum. Height, unless a height above three stories is determined not to detrimentally affect use, and heights not really the proper way to refer to, I mean, if, if it was three stories, then it's, then it's really an allowance. If it's thirty-two feet, it's a height, because three stories can be thirty feet or forty feet, or something like that. So we just, it's a pretty basic correction, and I talked to the applicant earlier today about it, and then, as far as I understand, there's no issues with the correction, it just hasn't been made yet. So it's just a note to add clarity to how we apply that condition.
Okay. All right, thanks. Any, anybody else have any questions? Does the applicant have a presentation?
Well, I, I'll finish mine, and then we'll, sorry. Just keep getting you up and down, I apologize. So, so the second part of the, the presentation is just to cover what's being proposed through this update. And what's now considered is, instead of the six-page sheet that we saw before, is a full thirty-page comprehensive PD amendment that still primarily concerns the changes we considered in November at the direction of the town. The applicant was requested to provide this update, and staff envisioned the update would primarily be technical in nature, involve updates to map sheets, and reflect changes that directly reflected the updates that were discussed in November. And many of the changes that are proposed through these additional sheets still largely fall within this umbrella. However, there are some additional changes that are requested that are more significant and require additional consideration from the Planning Commission. So we'll kind of go over the type of changes that are proposed, both at, at both levels right now. So in addition to providing revised or clean plan sheets, staff requested the existing, the existing approvals be shown, as they have here on the left, similar to what you guys saw in November, so we have an existing approval that's been clouded to identify the areas that are proposed to change, and then we have a clean sheet over here that reflects Example one illustrates the changes that are proposed to the site development plan sheet, that's SP one point oh, and can be summarized as follows. So this is just an example of the changes that have been done to kind of correct or update these plan set sheets. So this one reflects adjustments to Creekview Way and the relocation of the Town Square. These adjustments, this table in the top right corner have also been made. These were shown actually through the, what you guys saw in November, they were just actually included on the cover sheet, so this sheet's net new, but the table itself updating the changes is not. It just has, it has shifted location from being moved to the cover sheet to now being included on, on this particular sheet. Minor technical changes to the map also include property boundaries being removed, so these property boundaries in the middle that used to reflect previous ownership have now been removed just as an update, because Ranch Capital owns, the majority of this development, Town still owns these two parcels up in the north. And we're also considered, or listed as a certificate, our certificate of ownership's also listed on the application. Minor updates to grading also are clouded to reflect the changes to Creekview Way in here, and then overlot grading is occurring within this area to reflect the reconfiguration of these lots. Finally, I think that this property, or this one also shows the relocation of the transit hub. It was previously shown to be in this corner, here, next to this roundabout, and now it's shown to be along Marshall Drive up here, and that's per discussions that the applicant has had with RTD. Each street section, so if you go through your plan set, you'll notice that there's a lot of clouding involved on the sections that are related to the street, or the pages that are related to street section, so I wanted to provide example of those type of changes as well. So each street section's been updated in one regard or another. Many of these changes are, are technical in nature, involving updates to street names, updates to ensure consistency of how labels have been applied, clarification of setbacks and, from adjacent ride-aways. So the example we're showing here, these three notes relate to, that, one is just that this section was previously shown on a different page, another note reflects that the bike lane has been removed, that a note relating to the bike lane has been removed, because that's essentially redundant, the bike lanes shown on the, on the plan, and then, and it was really put on there to show the direction, or to clarify the direction, but that direction's now also been updated to be shown on the, on this, on the cross section. More significant updates to these sheets are kind of shown here. Really, we don't have any new street sections beyond the ones that have been discussed previously on Main Street and Creekview Way. We do have a new application of two existing sections, and that's, you can't see it here, but this is Section Seven and Section Eight. Old Railway previously didn't have any sections designated to it, and it now has two sections of Section Eight, if I'm recalling correctly, I can't quite see, but basically, yeah, it should be Section Eight has, is applied on two blocks of Old Railway, and Section Seven's applied in the middle block, and the reason that it needs three different sections is that bike lane occurs only on one section of that strip. So those are the type of changes that are generally reflected in these street cross-section One more change that was actually required as a technical correction concerns Section Thirteen, and that's because this section down here reflects a cross-section that applies to Section Thirteen, and that would, the way that this is illustrated reflects the developments on each side of the street, and Section Thirteen applies further north, and it also has been applied down here, but there's no developable area south of Avenue C here, so one of staff's notes is for this technical correction to be updated. We either need a complete new street section, or just simply a note saying that this section does not apply, or a double-sided development does not apply to this section of Avenue C. So now we'll turn our attention to some of the more significant changes being introduced through this PD update. The applicant's updates to this sheet do not follow the standard clouding system that was used on the other sheets, rather, they include, they included a clean sheet of the existing PD one, and then a redline version of the same sheet, which is what's shown here, to reflect the proposed changes. The applicant is proposing a number of changes to this sheet. Through the course of this review, staff has recommended that either a separate PD review be requested to address these changes, or that the details of many of these changes be referred to, be deferred to a final development plan reviews when staff, PC, and the town board have the associated context, such as site plans, building elevations, and four plans to consider the request against. The first of these two routes could, could be pursued in conjunction with an associated FDB, so a PD amendment could be processed in conjunction with an FDB that actually describes why, for example, you know, typology B needs to be updated. The second of these two routes would necessitate some changes to this PD through this review in order to remove or relax certain constraints. This option only exists because this level of detail shown on the PD is beyond what's required for plan development. The current proposal that the applicant's processing is, is really just to make specific changes to certain sections, certain typologies, and we'll go through some of those changes right now. In the cover memo, staff has attempted to clarify which changes requests can be reasonably considered now without the additional context versus the changes that would be better served to consider with final development plan review. This plan sheet comparison illustrates the designated areas each residential typology can, can occur, so this block basically shows, it's hard to see, but this, these are the six typologies that were allowed, are currently allowed through PD approval number one in Planning Area Two, and then these are the five typologies that are allowed in Planning Area Three. The current proposal would allow all of the typologies within Planning Area Two and would allow six typologies, so one additional typology within Planning Area Three. And the two primary changes here reflect the, this cottage typology being allowed within Planning Area Two, and high-density residential unit being allowed within Planning Area Number So staff's, I guess, wants, just wants to highlight that Planning Area Two has really kind of been thought of as the higher density, higher intensity kind of development, and the cottage-style home is the only typology that's actually described as single-family detached. So whether or not Planning Commission wants to open the door to having single-family homes within Planning Area Two is something that they should consider. And then the proposed changes to Plan, Planning Area Three, which include adding the high-density multi-unit flat to the southern area of the development, is another change that is different than what's been considered, and it's also a little bit more significant, because another change that's being requested, that particular typology, is that the six unit, so basically the cluster of six units is the maximum number of units that could be in one building, is being proposed to be eliminated, and that no maximum number of units within one particular structure would apply to that typology anymore. So those are the two, I guess, primary changes to the use distribution that need to be considered. Other changes that the applicant's proposing relate to unit size ranges. Ten, for example, a thousand, like, you know, if they're proposing a penthouse, a thousand to fifteen hundred square feet is, is a range, and they're proposing to expand those ranges for seven of the eleven residential typologies proposed. More often than not, unit size ranges are proposed to allow for smaller units. The request to expand unit size ranges appears fairly straightforward, and it's something I think that, you know, we could consider through this, through the course of this review, and I think the applicant will probably be able to explain in detail why. I guess, just to give you a little bit of context, and it's already kind of been alluded to, but this level of detail isn't typically what one would see in a plan development, it's, it's in, in here now. The, the task of making those changes just becomes a little bit more complicated, because what we're looking at is verbiage versus illustrative examples of what we're, what we're talking about. Kind of moving on to what the other, the other type of changes that are a little bit more significant, a little bit maybe more complex. Staff, and, and, you know, quite frankly, staff's not too, too confident that these should be considered without the additional justification or context that an FDB would normally afford. These changes include unit dimension size changes, so a change from, you know, a forty-foot-five, forty-five-by-fifty-foot lot going down to twenty feet by forty feet is just a, an example of what, you know, unit size change dimension is, you know, is proposed, and, and how we kind of contemplate that on a textual level versus an illustrative level. So these type of changes are being proposed for eleven residential typologies, and some units are going down to be as narrow or shallow as sixteen feet, so we can go into those individually if we need to. The means of parking and sources of access are also being proposed to, to change for ten of the typologies. Mandated alley or shared driveway access regulations are proposed to be removed from eight of those typologies. So that, you know, to kind of envision what that, that means is that, you know, when a, when an alley's mandated as a source of access, that would require the garage to be on the back of the, the building, and whether or not that's a limitation and we want to relax or remove is what we need to consider today. And then setback and building separation requirements are also being proposed to be reduced for six typologies, and then also, in certain instances, is entirely eliminated. And then finally, the other changes that might merit some additional consideration are deferring unit established, established unit dimensions, so in some instances, the applicant's actually just asking for those to be determined at final development plan, and that's along the lines of what staff was suggesting initially, but those are only being proposed in a couple of instances. And then some of the other changes relate to removing specifically how outdoor spaces provided for certain typologies. So, and then finally, there's a note that's being requested that I wanted to highlight. This note clarifies that this update basically effectively updates the design guidelines and would supplant, like, those design guidelines, so if you would rather have the design guidelines also updated so that they're consistent with these changes, staff suggests this note be removed. But this concludes my presentation. Happy to hand it over to the applicant now, or ask me any questions you may have.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we follow up with questions? Questions on the second portion of staff's presentation?
I've got one. So are we suggesting that in the building mass diagram, CS one point four, figure H, that in, in, was it Phase Two, what's it called? The center section there, is it Phase Two?
Yeah, or Planning Area Two.
Planning Area Two?
Yeah.
That we allow up to a ninety-foot hotel in that area?
Staff's not making a suggestion, I just want to clarify what the proposal is. That's, that is the proposal, so.
That's the proposal from the applicant.
What, yeah, what I wanted to make sure everyone was clear on was that currently the building mass diagram and the design guidelines are in conflict. They don't agree with, they're not consistent, I guess is the best way to put it. The design guidelines specifically state that a hotel's up to ninety feet in height are allowed within Planning Area Two. The building mass diagram only contemplated a seventy-five-foot-tall structure in this specific area, and then everything else is limited to sixty-five feet, generally. I mean, that's the next highest massing allowance.
Okay. I just want to be clear about that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
And then also, Stephen, you spoke to your notes at the end there, and I got a little bit confused about what we were addressing. So when you're taking square footage into account as per your note, you said it doesn't and I include basements, and I'm, I didn't understand.
Basements?
Yes. On your notes on planning area two?
I don't remember referring to basements.
You may not have, but it's on here.
It's in this box.
Oh, it's in the box? Oh, so that's just above grade, that's an existing note. So the, the second note, the one in red, I don't know if you can tell the, the color differences, but it's the second note that's, that's being proposed through this review that I wanted to highlight. The first note's basically just saying that the square footages that are contemplated through these proposals, like the eleven hundred to sixteen hundred square feet, is above-grade floor area, not, not, not to include basements. So if they had an eight hundred square foot basement, they wouldn't be limited to three hundred to, you know, whatever, like, so this example shows a range of eleven hundred square feet to sixteen hundred square feet. If eight hundred of that square feet was occupied by the basement, that's not going to knock that limit down to three hundred to eight hundred above grade, so.
Thank you. One of the other changes is that originally, planning area three was going to be where single-family homes were allowed, but now the applicant's requesting that planning area two also allow for single-family homes?
That's how this changes, yeah, essentially. So planning area two, like, the, if you look at the, I gave you guys a, a handout with the, basically a black and white version that has no changes on it, and then a, a colored version that has some changes on it. In the middle there, and I, we can go to this sheet, you just can't see it as well. Right here, that red basically shows that planning area two, which is already, applies to these six designations, now applies to the rest of the designations as well. So any of these typologies could be in planning area two, whereas before, planning area two only had six, I think, or, yeah, I think it was six and five, the split. So if you flip back a sheet, planning area two had six residential typologies, and three had five distinct typologies. And the, the biggest one that I wanted to highlight is that single-family, this is the only single-family home that's designed or included as a typology. The other ones are generally attached in one way or another.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? I don't want to cut you off if you.
No, no, I'm tired.
Okay, thanks, Stephen. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation?
Yes, good evening. My name's Randy Goodson with Ranch Capital RC, representing RC Superior, and I want to introduce the new project manager who will be moving out here to the area to manage a project locally on a day-to-day basis. He has tremendous experience in developing urban mixed-use communities in, in California, and he'll describe that. His name is Bill Jenks.
Hi, good evening. Nice to be here. I'm new with Ranch, I came on January first, so I'm very excited to be part of the project. I think it's an awesome beginning to a planning document here. I commend staff and you guys for getting this to the point it's at. Like Randy said, I, I'm coming from San Diego, I just, I was working for a large developer there doing mixed-use town centers at similar scale to this. So yeah, excited to get started and look forward to meeting all of you on more personal terms and kind of talking about your ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Bill is also a LEED-certified architect, and I hope he has a chance at some point in time to tell you about these other projects he's worked on. They're really amazing in, in the Hollywood Hills area of Los Angeles and up in Mountain View, California, a mixed-use community that became the, the.
It's LinkedIn headquarters in, in Mountain View, so it's a, that's a, it's about a 1.8 million square foot project with a half million square feet of office, retail on the ground floor, a cinema, hotel, parking structure, you know, four hundred units. So I was previously working on three projects that were all about that scale, so it's good, good experience.
A great, great addition to the team, and like I said, he'll be, he'll be local here starting March first, or March second. Staff did an excellent job with the presentation. We've worked very closely with staff since the last hearing to incorporate a number of the items that staff went through. To, to respect your time, perhaps we can focus on the residential typologies. All of the other elements were really conforming to the conditions of approval recommended by this commission and staff at the prior meeting. Would that be okay to focus on residential typologies?
That would be good, thanks.
The, a couple of, of major points here. The design guidelines, the design guideline supplement is to be read in conjunction with the PD. And the intent of the design guideline supplement is to help add the rights to develop urban buildings that have a pedestrian orientation. And the reason the design guidelines were found to be necessary is because the town in two thousand twelve, two thousand eleven, I think it was two thousand eleven, approved in two thousand twelve, recognized that if they were to create an urban place with the town center, that they needed to augment the town's existing code. And so these design guidelines do not supersede the town code, they only augment the town code where the town code is silent, or where these design guidelines are silent. So for example, if the design guidelines don't cover onsite drainage, which they don't, but the town code covers onsite drainage, the future, ourselves and future builders are required to comply with the town code for, for that area. And if the town code doesn't provide for urban housing, townhomes, high-density detached housing, that I'll describe in more, more detail, then the design guideline supplement is to be, is to, is the reference. There's a section, section two point three of the design guidelines, and if I could just read this, I'd like to read this paragraph, because I think it just lays the foundation and explains why we want to go back, and, and I'll, I'll keep referring to the design guidelines, because the residential typologies have the most relationship to the design guidelines, because this is intended to give the builders that we're working with the single sh- shopping, you know, single stop shopping for, for the project, and because the town's code doesn't provide now, and it didn't in two thousand eleven, it doesn't provide for high-density urban building criteria. So the section two point three is, the title is Relationship of the Design Guideline Supplement to Other Municipal Regulations. The PD amendment, together with this design guideline supplement, established the requirements and criteria standards for review and approval by the town of all uses and activities for future final development plans within the Superior Town Center. The design guidelines augment, but do not supersede, the town of Superior's existing ordinances relating to requirements and criteria that are not addressed in the PD amendment. In addition, all applicable local, state, federal codes and regulations, including but not limited to building, structural, mechanical, plumbing, electrical, health, safety, OSHA, and fire codes must be met. If however, there is any inconsistency between the requirements or criteria in the town code and these guidelines, because these guidelines have been adopted specifically for the Superior Town Center, these guidelines will prevail and control in the town's review of any application for the development in the STC. And then just, I'll read the first portion of two point four, who uses the design guideline supplement? This document is to be used by builders as a guide and framework for their efforts to design and develop individual blocks or individual parcels within the Superior Town Center. And so throughout the design guideline, the design guidelines, there were being, we worked with the town, the planning commission and the town board at the time to, to edit essentially the design guidelines that the town adopted in two thousand twelve, hiring, hiring their own consultants. And we did that in the context of the development industry at the time, of what projects we saw being built or trying to be built, and there's been an evolution from two thousand twelve to today, because there has not been a solution to the construction defect concerns that have eliminated the condominium industry. And as a result, more high-density housing has been innovated and is being built in areas of, you know, all throughout the, the greater Denver area. And so that, that's one aspect that, that we're addressing here. And then the other aspect is because the PD plan set, which is what staff went through, and is, in a lot of instances, it was being edited at the same time as these design guidelines were being edited. And over time, we have discovered that there are some areas that were edited in the, in the design guidelines that where the edit didn't necessarily carry over, or didn't carry over clearly to the plan set. Staff mentioned one of those areas is in the design guidelines under the hotel section, it says that hotels are allowed up to ninety feet in height within the project. On the plan set, it only referenced ninety feet in height in planning area one on the plan set, not planning area one and planning area two, the only two areas where hotels are allowed. And so that's one clarification that we're trying to make. Along with that, there are a host of criteria in the design guidelines, including visual impact analyses, solar studies, and things like that, that would accompany every FDP for a building. The, so addressing and breaking down those two elements, the, the changes here relate to specifically the, the references to parking, to alley access, and to open space are covered in much greater detail in the design guidelines under entire paragraphs that, that I'll point to. Whereas here, there were, were very, very brief references to open space or to alley access. And to avoid, we're, we're trying to eliminate that, that confusion. And, and then the other aspect is the aspects relating to unit size ranges, to the lot sizes particularly, those relate to changes in the industry in, in high-density townhomes that are being built at, at, you know, fifteen, sixteen feet wide, and we have some examples. Bill will, will, will touch on that topic and walk through examples of other product And trustee Lassus, you had asked the question about the single-family detached housing in, in planning area two. Planning area two contemplated a lot of condominiums, and condominiums that we've worked really hard. We've found, you know, one builder building condominiums, went and said, you know, we'll throw the land in and get paid out of the closing of the units, and we haven't been able to make that deal work. But at the same time, we've had a lot more conversations with town home builders and, and home builders that are building, in fact, we have a contract with a builder that's going to build luxury housing of twenty-five hundred to thirty-two hundred square feet on lots that are forty by forty-five feet wide. And so it's a very urban environment, in urban areas of, we call them, you know, we call this beachfront, and it's something we referenced a lot throughout the, the entitlement process, because we think this is beachfront, and, and the land is valuable, the location's important, and in creating a walkable place, we need to have the front doors closer together, and we need to, we need to have a concentration of people in a, in a tight area that are going to all walk to the town plaza and, and provide that activation. I know we've talked about that at, at length over the approvals of the project. And so when we, we haven't just sort of taken a detached residential category and said, well, we can build that in the town core area. We took that detached residential category, we shrunk the allowable unit size, and we said, we can build that in the town core area. And for example, we're working with a, we're still working and trying to attract a really high-quality local hotel operator to build a real special property here, and we need to preserve the views from that hotel. So in that instance, we have a plan we're working on where the hotel would be built, and it would be wrapped by, there would have to be a parking structure, and that parking structure would be wrapped by townhomes or high-density detached homes that are three stories in height, so that the views of the hotel rooms are all unobstructed in perpetuity. And so that addresses the size. All of the, the, the product types and they, the dimensions are, have, have gone down in a couple instances for townhomes to sixteen feet, and the, and the dimensions of the detached lots have reduced, so that we can replace, we can accommodate density without having to have condominium buildings. There are two product types that staff referenced where we said, these unit dimensions will be determined on future FDPs, and those are multi-unit buildings. If we are successful in having the multi-unit buildings constructed, we, could you leave the dimensions there? We thought, again, adding to clarity, that, that for those two unit types, the townhome building E and the high-density detached buildings F, those are the, the only two that we suggested the, the lot dimensions be shown on a future FDP. With that, I, I think it'd be helpful if, if Bill Jenks can walk you through some of the architecture, some of the architecture from a builder that we're, we have under contract and will be submitting an FDP shortly, and other products that were, maybe not twisting builders' arms, but something very close to that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So do we have the, the slides that we brought, that we put up here? And, so.
I'm Neil.
Where's the, oh. Oh, here you go. Yeah, that's it. I'll, I'll let you find it. So the, the reason for including the, the actual kind of detailed specs in, in the PD instead of leaving it for future decision is like Randy said, we're, we have the super fun job of going out and trying to find builders who are actually build product in the, in the site and buy land. It's really hard for them to do that if they don't know basically a, a basic envelope of what they're allowed to build, so that's, that's why we want to provide the kind of detail of, you can build a twenty-foot wide unit, or you can buy, build a sixteen-foot wide unit. And there was some concern from staff, or not, not concern, but they wanted us to show you some examples of some narrower unit, just so we can talk about what it looks like, what it feels like. To me, you know, a sixteen-foot or twenty-foot wide unit is, is not at all uncommon. Certainly in, in California, I'm not, I'm not as familiar with the local market yet, but I personally lived in a five hundred square foot condo for three years when I first moved to San Diego, so this is, these, these units are huge compared to, compared to that. Let's see if. So this is what Randy was talking about, this is an example of one of our builders. You'll see this or something very like it in a FDP sub-middle here in a couple, couple weeks or a month, something like that. And this is an attached townhome product. What's shown here is actually, I think, from twenty feet to twenty-five feet wide. Oh, wow, nice, fancy. So these, these units are, I think, twenty feet wide each, this is probably twenty-five on the end here, with a twenty-four on either, on, on the end cap here and in the middle here. And we've talked about looking at a sixteen-foot wide unit. What that does is, is a lot of things, it provides more flexibility for the builders, and it provides a, a greater diversity of product types, and so you're going to get faster absorption, more people moving in faster, which is always, you know, good for the project. The more people we can get in from the start, the faster we can do that, the, the better it's going to be for everybody. So yeah, this is, this is a three-story product with a, a partial fourth story. These have bonus rooms, or, or, you know, small spaces like that, bars on the roof with a nice outdoor deck and, and, you know, barbecue and living space on the, on the kind of an indoor-outdoor experience there. These basically have a garage on the ground floor with a small living space in the front. Typically bedrooms on the third level actually, and living space with a kitchen and living room on the second level. Some of them actually flip that, so you actually get your living space up. Some of them actually flip that, so you actually get your living space up on top next to that roof deck, which is, which is really nice. So this is kind of a, I'm going to go in order of extremes. This is kind of the smallest you would ever want to go. This is a ten-foot wide unit. This is actually a historic unit in Washington DC that was renovated into this, but it kind of shows you what you can do with ten feet. Oops. And so, you know, it's not bad at all. It's a very livable space, a very nice space. And so that, you know, this is, we're proposing a sixteen-foot unit, which is this plus another one and a half times. Another view of that ten-foot unit. This is a twelve-foot unit, getting a little bit bigger, obviously. Feels, feels pretty nice. Again, we're talking about another four feet on top of this. But again, just kind of showing you what these units can feel like. This is a thirteen-foot wide plan that shows you how the plan could work. The ground, the ground floor would have a two-car tandem garage. Your second floor has your bedrooms here with, you know, nice big lock-in closet, master suite, that type of thing. And then upstairs, you have a nice twelve-by-thirteen-foot living room, which is a good-sized living room, attached dining room, and a nice big kitchen. So you can, you can really fit a lot in these, in these units. And then for the kind of last example here, this is a fifteen-foot wide townhouse. Again, three stories with a garage on the ground floor. There's your tandem garage showing you how the garage works, a small entry foyer off of the patio. Living area, a nice big open plan living area on the second floor. And this actually has two bedrooms on the, on the third floor. There'd be an option for a one-bedroom probably with like a den or something like that. But that kind of shows you how that, how that narrower unit can work. And so it can be a really nice unit. Any questions on that at all that I can answer?
This is probably on a turn, but is, is the whole purpose here to try to attract more builders and to give them wider options in terms of building higher density?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, it's really to provide the kind of flexi, as much flexibility as we can. We're working, this particular builder is really interested in doing a sixteen-foot wide unit, and so if, you know, if they're willing to take down more units now because they're smaller and they can get more people in, I think that's a good thing. And so we're just trying to provide that flexibility for builders.
Have you guys studied, I mean, if we were to adopt something like this, I mean, what's it going to do to the overall density of the project? I know that's been a big concern for residents from the beginning.
From my perspective, the approved density is the approved density. We're not going to, you know, be able to go above that no matter what. Really, this is a, like Randy said, originally, Ranch had been looking at these condo products. It was a sixteen-unit condo building. Just with the way, with litigation in the area and builders that we have, it's looking like that might be a hard product to build, at least at first. Doing the sixteen-foot wide units allows us to get some of that density back. It still doesn't actually, the sixteen-foot wide units compared to the condo units, it's still a lower density than was originally approved. So ultimately, you're not going to see any difference in density from what's approved already.
I'm sorry to interrupt you if you have more.
No, that's, that's, that's all I've got. Unless Randy, you want to talk about anything else?
Great.
Maybe you could, excuse me, maybe you could talk a little bit about the number of units, the maximum numbers or number of units in a range in, in any building. For example, this is like a, or six or eight, eight-unit building max. Maybe you could go into that a little bit about, seems to be if you have six or eight units in a building, or four, even the four, in a building, that creates other open space areas, and you've got separation between them, it has a whole different look than a twenty-four unit building, for example. The building itself's got twenty-four units or something like that, or even bigger than that. So it has a tendency to have some density, but it also looks, in my view, a little lower density. It's got more of a residential feel because you're, you're at a three-story, a four-story deal here.
Would you want to comment on that, Randy?
Yes. Fred, thank you for bringing that up. We are proposing to change the number of units in the attached projects that would come back for FDP approval, really just to provide the flexibility that I referenced earlier, that Bill continued to reference. One challenge that we have, well, and really Fred, I think, said, made all the points. We're still capping it, I think we're capping it at twelve units per building, and, but it has to come back to the town for FDP approval for those dimensions. So if you don't like the building, you'll tell them, you know, that you don't like it, or you'll suggest how to change it, hopefully. The, the challenge we have is that builders are spending twenty to fifty thousand dollars to come up with a product just to come before the planning commission and the board for concept review. It's because we can do concept review before submitting an FDP. But when they look at our, our design guidelines, they say, well, it's not allowed. I don't, I'm not going to, you know, spec twenty to fifty thousand dollars to come up with plans because there's not product in the marketplace where they're saying, oh, you know, we built it over here at Indian Peaks, let's come build it over here in Superior and just show you the exact same product. We're asking them to take, to create a new product here, and we're trying to give them a broader range. But it's still within a narrow range, it's two to twelve units where they can come in for a multi-unit building. And one of the issues with our six-unit buildings is the cost per square foot was about the same as the cost per square foot for the townhome buildings. And so the, and then the cost of construction defect insurance was, is more expensive on top of that. So the economics of getting these condo buildings, we actually had a builder under contract who gave us a non-refundable deposit of five thousand dollars. Not a lot, but to get a builder to leave a deposit is tough. And we worked with them for over a year. They're a builder that's building condos in, and, in high-density townhomes in downtown. And, but as they develop their, you know, worked with their architect, spent a bunch of money with their architect, came up with a plan, they said, it doesn't make sense to do condos, we'd rather just do the townhomes. And we said, well, we already have, you know, townhome builders. Do you want to build sixteen-foot wide townhomes like you're doing in downtown? And they looked at that, and they came back and said, well, you know, not really, not yet. So we're trying to give them, we're trying to modify the design guidelines so that when they look at the design guidelines, they say, yeah, this is, this is approved, you can bring this to the town. You still have to comply with all of the ordinances that I, that I referenced earlier and all the codes, but conceptually, yes, this is something that is achievable if you can make all the plans meet all these criteria. As opposed to the way the plans read now, they're not, they're not allowed at all. And then I think the probability of getting that done may be consistent with our experience to date. So we're hoping by changing it, we can, we can change that dialogue. I want to reference also some additional sections of the design guidelines that I indicated I would earlier. In Section Eight, I don't know if anybody has design guidelines handy, but Section Eight of the design guidelines, it's the, it says residential design guidelines. And it is, I think it's about twelve-page, or, let's see, what is this? The residential Section Eight is twenty-one pages of guidelines. And so the headings are residential unit types, eight-point-one. The blocks have been configured to accommodate the wide variety of building types and products identified in detail in Section Eight-point-one. Section Eight-point-one is a more detailed typology by typology description that summarized on that one page that is in, was in the staff presentation. That summarized on this page. This is the page in the plan set. And once we change this, if this is approved by staff and by the planning commission and the board, then we will, staff has already said, well, we're going to want you to go back and change the design guidelines. Originally, we were saying, well, this will just supersede. But we agree that once this is agreed upon, we'll go back and we'll change the design guidelines. So we have a comprehensive plan set, and we have a comprehensive design guideline that are, that are in sync. The, yeah, that match. The next one, you know, eight-point-three, architectural character and neighborhood compatibility. Eight-point-three, building heights, massing, and scale. And then there's A, B, C, D, E, all the way through H of elements relating to that. Roof forms and materials, exterior materials, color and design elements. Garages and service areas, so trash and exterior utilities. Common area, accessories and structures. And neighborhood and private, semi-private open space within the blocks. And if you look at the, just the amount of text under garages and surface, service areas, it's, you know, three paragraphs. Under neighborhood and private, semi-private open space within blocks, it's three paragraphs. Common area and accessory structures, five, five paragraphs. Whereas in the, oops, did I delete that other one? My book hit the, well, in staff, in the staff presentation on that page, there's two or three words about open space, or two or three words about, about parking. And so what, what happened is the design guidelines kept getting more and more, more and more clear on what the open space would be within the blocks, what the parking situation would be. We, in fact, added a whole parking table at the beginning of the PD. We have a whole parking table, a whole plan set. The first full page of the PD goes into the parking criteria, the parking model, and we didn't have that initially. So that's where I think it makes sense to, to add that clarity. And, and we appreciate staff's recommendation on the, for the motion, the draft, the draft motion recommended to the planning commission, we're fully in agreement with. The draft motion is to make any other staff technical corrections and changes, and then, of course, to do the clarification on the building mass diagram sheet that staff referenced that where for buildings of three stories or more, or buildings above three stories, there'd have to be a further analysis. So if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Any questions for the applicant?
I do, I have one. Just to clarify, how will these new homes that are being proposed, the narrow townhomes, fit into the existing lots that are already approved in the previous PD?
Well, we have a plan that is, an FDP that will be submitted by, before the end of February. But to give you a prelude to that, all of our blocks are mixed unit blocks, mixed products. So we have in, in Block Thirteen, which is here, we have, this is our first block, this is the, this is Main Street, and so Boulder Valley Ice and Indoor Sports, this is, it's better to look over here because there was a lot line adjustment. The, this is where the Impact Sports Building is under construction now. And then this is, you see the whole frontage of the Boulder Valley Ice and Indoor Sports, that's Rink One, Rink Two is back here. And so Superior Drive will be completed to this location, this is the parking lot where they have their offices right now. And so the first residential block, as opposed to the mixed-use blocks, right here, has the forty-by-forty-five-foot homes on the exterior. It has an interior loop road. All the units are alley-served. Virtually all, most of the units in Planning Area Three, except for the ones that come to the edge here, will be, will be alley-served. And then there are townhomes. The imagery that Bill showed you from Wonderland Builders, those townhomes will be in three to five building or townhome blocks, and will be constructed here and on both sides of promenade. And, and then on the interior, we have a different type of townhome product fronting central courtyards that are also, so there'll be garages back-to-back in internal here on twenty-six to twenty-eight-foot-wide internal private drives or, or internal drives. And, and then on the, there'll be parks, small, small public open space in the middle because it's a metropolitan district that will own and maintain those areas, they're, they're public space. There'll be, you know, people, as they're walking throughout the community, there'll be trails and things that lead so that they can go to different, different locations. So this, this has three different product types, and the, well, the architecture, I think all the architecture's fantastic. The architecture you'll see the most is on the exterior where we have the more expensive buildings. And to add to that, these buildings have elevators or elevator options. So the townhomes, the, you know, the narrow townhomes will actually live like a multi-story or a penthouse-type condominium because it's pretty economical to have private elevators these days. Because in a condominium building, you have to have very large elevators to accommodate fire and different types of access.
I have a question about the hotel location. So originally, when, when we were talking about this in November, there was the sighting of the hotel location. And now, my understanding is that now that's being removed and it's being anywhere within Plan Development Area Number Two? Is that, is that, is that the intent? Or is it still going to be located where you were originally planning it?
We're right now working on three hotels with developers for three hotels. So there's Block One, Lot Three, that is designated for hotel, and already, there's no conflict, it says ninety feet, although I think that hotel will be, what, sixty, sixty feet or so? And, or those two hotels up there will each be sixty feet. And then the, we're working on another hotel, are, we're working really hard, and our preference is to put a hotel within this block here. It could possibly go over here, but this, you know, fronts Marshall Road and, and Main Street, it's, has good proximity to the town plaza and where the obstructed, the first major obstructed parking decks would go. And so that, that is our intent. And to sort of the sweeteners, you try to, there's a lot of hotels in the corridor, and this market is not supporting a traditional full-service hotel that's two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a key to build and because of the room rates along the corridor. The, but, but we're working on a concept that can have a rooftop dining or a rooftop bar and, and really differentiate the hotel from, from all the other hotels in the corridor. And, and so we are focusing on trying to make that happen in this block here, along with office here and retail, the ground floor.
And so that one would be up to ninety feet?
Well, because the rooftop deck, and we haven't designed it, it could be up to ninety feet. The, one thing to clarify is the, Stephen, is it possible to pull up the approved PD, PD, the original PD Amendment One, the two thousand thirteen PD Amendment? How about that? Which sheet do you want to get to? The, the building mass diagram? So here, yes, right here, I'm just going to blow this out. You see this ninety-foot max height? And... There's footnote here was provide height, for height allowance up to seventy-five feet of hotel built and location shown with the hatch. And so it's not like we're going from sixty feet to ninety feet. This, I'll show you the location with the hatch. This, I'll show you the location with the hatch. If you follow this line here, over to here. So when this was the Town Plaza, we had the hotel preference over here next to the Town Plaza. And that was identified as, as up to 75 feet for the hotel. But then it's in conflict with the design guidelines for the hotel. Pardon me one second as I just reference the design guidelines.
It's on page one dash nine. You're looking for the hotel height allowance?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, so page one dash nine, under 1.6A Romanate I, it states that, it specifically shows Town Center Core Planning Area Two. And under Planning Area Two, the Town Core will be an integrated urban setting by incorporating shopping, entertainment and restaurant uses along Main Street and the Town Square with flexed place, space around and above, office, retail, residential, civic, et cetera. The buildings will be predominantly three to four stories with some structures exceeding four stories. The building heights of all structures in the Town Center Core are set forth in Figure H that establishes maximum heights for all the blocks. Hotels are allowed up to 90 feet in height. And that's Planning Area Two. I'll tell you sort of the corollary to that is this language, as you heard, says the buildings will be predominantly three and four stories with some structures exceeding four stories. But then on the plan set, we had a note, well, it actually wasn't in the plan set, it was in the conditions of approval, we had a note that buildings above three stories will have to be reviewed for approval. And so we've incorporated that change to the plan set to make it clear that buildings above three stories will incorporate that language. And in fact, that's staff condition number two to clarify, to further clarify that language. And we're just carrying over the 90 feet from here over to here. And then really flip flopping the location because when the town, we want to have the hotel proximate to the Town Plaza. So when the Town Plaza came over here, we, we, one thing we also learned, as I mentioned earlier, is the hotel needs unobstructed views to the mountains. And so by putting the hotel, by focusing the hotel in this location here, we have the hotel on the promenade adjacent to the plaza. And then by wrapping the townhomes on the edge of the parking structure, the hotel that would sit right in here will have those unobstructed views to the mountains. It will not be looking over any other buildings. Because we'll control this building and setback on this building. And by putting them right in front of the park, this building's limited to 32 feet, which is the height of those townhomes. That gives us 65% of the rooms will be facing the mountains with unobstructed views. And that just helps us with the economics of building a more expensive hotel than a traditional limited service hotel that you're seeing up and down the corridor.
Thank you.
So again, we very much appreciate your time in considering our application. We appreciate staff's time. We fully support staff's recommended motion. Thank you.
Before you, before you leave, Randy, would you mind speaking to the setback changes briefly? I want to make sure I follow what you're proposing there.
The setback changes. Excuse me one moment, I'm just finding the spot. Exhibit.
Commissioner Sotell, are you referring to the ones within the residential typologies or?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, the setback changes on residential typologies, okay. What I was looking for is the sheet that is actually part of the application.
Your narrative or?
No, the, the plan set.
Oh.
Who's the plan set? So the plan set has a build to setback diagram. I'll go back to that other sheet, the residential typologies, but they relate. So I think it's easier to start here. So here's the build to setback diagram. And the, because it's a, it's an urban environment that we're creating, all of the setbacks for the buildings that fronted streets started with zero feet to a range of the maximum distance. And the intent was that, for example, as staff referenced in staff's report, I'm not sure staff touched on it in the overview, but in the staff report, they mentioned, staff mentioned that on the promenade, we have, and in, along Main Street, we have zero to 10 foot max setback, but 50% of the facade has to be zero, you know, built on the property line. And so the buildings are pulled up up front. And that we have made a clarification that we can have areas of discovery or courtyards that can, if a courtyard's built, then clearly there's not going to be a building within 10 feet of that setback. And in working through that with staff, they clarified right here on footnote three, I'll paraphrase it and then I'll read it exactly. They said, yeah, you can build areas of discovery, but still 50% of all the buildings must be within that, no more than, must be at zero feet, must be right on, on the property line. So we get that urban environment. Footnote three is, areas of discovery, public spaces such as passageways, pasos and courtyards may be excluded from the build to setback requirements. However, the requirement that 50% of the facades are required to be built at zero setback for areas designated as requiring a zero to 10 foot setback shall still be met. And so the intent here was for us to make sure we're building urban places, not suburban, the buildings are ways, you know, off the street. And one thing that we had discovered is there was a typo in that one of the setbacks just said eight feet. All of them, I'll show you. This is the corresponding sheet on the original approved PD, original, I mean the PD Amendment Number One, approved in 2013. And so here you can see that it was zero to 15, zero to 10. And this is at eight foot minimum. And this was the only area that had the residential buildings fronting the Town Core here. Or the, pardon me, the promenade, promenade way. So this is the area. And the, these setbacks here did not match the residential typology. So now I'll go to the residential typology sheet. And so do you see the setbacks here, front side, zero to 10 feet, sort of 20? And I'll go to another one in Planning Area Three. Do you see again setbacks, zero to 10 feet? Setbacks, front minimum, four foot, minimum four feet. Front, minimum zero feet, side yard, five feet. And like I said earlier, just a lot more detail in the dimensions. I say a minimum zero feet. And so this is, these are for the Planning Area Three. And so there was a conflict as it evolved here where there was more detail, it just didn't get picked up on that earlier page. And so we added the zero to eight feet, just in this, in this one location to be consistent, as staff mentioned in staff's presentation.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have several members of the public here who would like to speak, I'm assuming. If you would, I would ask that you step up to the podium. Try to keep your comments to five minutes, if you will. We have a light to remind you and ask you to try to wrap things up once you see that go on. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak? If you could just introduce yourself when you get to the podium.
Hi, I'm Teresa Clark. I live on East Wiggins here in Superior. Did I just disconnect that? Can you, can you still hear me?
Yeah, you're picking up.
Thank you. I am, as you all know, the woman who spoke with you at the last meeting about the 250 foot residential buffer mentioned in the 1998 annexation agreement that applies to the STC development. The concern, my concerns and the concerns of the neighbors regarding PD Plan Amendment Three are that the 250 foot residential buffer is incorrectly depicted in those documents. And because it's incorrectly depicted in those documents, there is a concern, a warning, that should you all move them up the chain to the Town Board and the Town Board approves it and the mayor signs off on it, that those incorrect depictions will indeed become what happens to the buffer. Examples of this are the grading contours depicted in the documentation in PD Plan Amendment Three depict the current excavated site of the 250 foot buffer. And it's my understanding that the town manager announced at a meeting last week that the developer had committed to restoring the 250 foot buffer. I am not putting words in your mouth, that is just what I heard. So I don't know if that's been corroborated between the two of us, but I'm just saying that's what the town manager said. And if that is the case, then PD Plan Amendment Three should depict the 2012 contours of the 250 foot buffer as opposed to the excavation that's already happened to it and that was in error signed off on by the mayor. The likewise, the 250 foot residential buffer in the documents is only depicted as a 200 foot natural buffer. And it excludes the additional 50 foot building setback, which combined with the 250 natural buffer constitute the entirety of the 250 feet. Examples of that are Block 19, Block 20 and Block 26. Lots One and Two are depicted within the northernmost 50 feet of the 250 foot residential buffers. And they should be depicted to the north of and outside of the 250 foot residential buffer. Likewise, a road is depicted inside the northernmost 50 feet of the 250 foot residential buffer. This road should be depicted on, per the annexation agreement, should be depicted on the east side of Carlton Pond, which is listed in the documents as Detention Pond. So those are the concerns that we have simply regarding the depiction of the residential buffer in these documents. You all may choose to approve the documents as they're written and then send them to the Town Board and subsequent to the Town Mayor. Residents are requesting that you send this back to the applicant saying, let's clean up this document before we discuss it anymore. And as an engineer, it's not really that difficult for them to clean it up. It's just a few CAD changes and downstream changes to the document. So frankly, that should take all of 20 minutes to an experienced user of the software. So those are the buffer issues. Regarding the requests within sections, the sections of a 90 foot hotel and a 75 foot hotel, we request that you simply adhere to the building heights and the setbacks already set forth and approved in PD Plan Amendments One and Two. So I also know that you guys have gotten a lot of emails that you've got to read into public comment, but if you have any questions of me, I'm happy to answer them.
Are you able to, to identify the page where the depiction is, is according to you incorrect?
The page is called, I included it in the email, it's called, it's got Site Grading Plan.
Okay.
On it. And I attached to the document for, my document, my letter to you, I attached to it the sections of the annexation agreement that apply to, oh, there it is. So, is it? Yes, so, may I?
Yes. Actually, if you could, do you have a pointer there? It'd be better if we could have you speak into the microphone.
Good, okay. So this 50 feet right here where the road is, is part of the 250 foot residential buffer. There's been a lot of discussion about what this 50 feet is supposed to be. But the annexation is pretty clear that it's a no build, no improvement, leave it alone. There's discussion in the annexation agreement about a trail going through it. And within the annexation agreement, what further corroborates where the road is supposed to be is in Section 11A3 that says, however, a street may be constructed within this buffer, where it refers to the Highway 36 buffer that frankly has been ignored by the applicant, the planning commission, the Town Board and the mayor. And it goes on to say that the parties specifically intend that a street may be within this buffer on the east side of Carlson Pond. So Carlson Pond isn't depicted here, is right in this, well, this area. So the intention was to have the road connect over here and to have this kind of curve up and be that the connection point and not to have it a road in the 50 foot, the northernmost 50 feet of the 250 foot residential buffer. Likewise, that is mentioned in the design guidelines, the original design guidelines that the town paid for. I think they were done by Oz Architecture. So, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public who'd wish to speak?
Mr. Chair, may I respond to those comments?
Yes, please.
Let me interject really quick, Commissioner Sotell. If there were any public comments submitted by email that need to be read into the record, we need to get to that.
Yeah, we generally do, thank you. We generally do make each of those part of the public record. Point of clarification, do you want these read into the record?
If, depending on the length, if you If, depending on the length, if you think it's appropriate to read them word for word into the record, I would suggest that. If it's, if it's too long to be read word for word, perhaps a best summary would suffice.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you. If you could just bear with me for a moment, Randy, and then we'll give you a chance to, to respond. There were at least, at least four emails that were submitted prior to the hearing, and then we received from Ms. Clark more correspondence this evening. And I think most of the emails did ask that they be included in part of the public record. The, I'll take a crack at it, the gist of the emails.
Are the same.
It's pretty consistent. There's concern among the residents who live in the neighborhood, the same part of the neighborhood as, as Ms. Clark, about the buffer strip. It's been, it's been a point of contention and attention for a bit. I think everybody knows what this relates to. And in general, I think the request is that the planning commission vote to hold up further changes to the PDs and so forth until the developer has taken steps to, to restore the buffer strip. And so, hearing no objection, I would, and we'll, we'll go ahead and make these part of the record, the emails. And Mr. Goodson, if you want to respond, please.
Yes, Randy Goodson with R.C. I think the best way to sort of summarize the response is that there continues to be a misunderstanding, I think, of what the approved project is. And secondly, there's a continued misunderstanding about the reference to an annexation agreement that, as we discussed in the last hearing, is merely an agreement between R.C. Superior, a successor in interest to the property, and the town of Superior. And the agreement explicitly states there are no third-party beneficiaries, and that agreement was acknowledged, discussed extensively, and effectively superseded by the PD Amendment One and the development agreement. And if residents are looking at it and have made investment decisions based upon it, that's their error. It's not an agreement that they have any benefit of, and it, and secondly, there are no errors. Here is the approved PD, page nine, I'll show you the signature page in a moment. This is the approved PD from 2013, the page SP 1.1, Site Development Plan with Proposed Grading, South, and you can see, the grading is shown. In addition, this is the 50-foot building setback zone. It's agreed to as a building setback zone. It's shown on all the exhibits, the road is there. This is what was agreed to by the town board. This is all private land. It's a 50-foot building setback, but it's private property. But having said all of that, we did go to significant expense to do all this grading based on requests that we thought we had, to push the land down so the homes would be less visible. That also eliminated view potential. If you were to drive out there, you could see, a lot of these homes would be pressed, you know, compressed down. And so we have talked with town staff extensively, and rather than putting in a big unsightly retaining wall, we would much rather come in and raise the grade. We have the dirt to do it. And that raising the grade will allow, I don't prefer to use the word restore the buffer, because the buffer has never disappeared, it's still a buffer, but it will actually, it will raise the elevation of the land where the buffer exists. And so we are in discussion with the town, and we're working on a revised grading permit for this location here, that will in fact allow our homes to be 20 feet higher in many locations, and afford them better views. It's, was a miscommunication. Clearly, there's a lot of people concerned about it, many members of the board were concerned about it. And as a result, we are concerned about it and have been concerned about it. So we've agreed that we are going to go back and return the soil to that location, raise the elevation by about 20 feet, and that will allow the building setback area and the buffer to be returned to its original grade. And so that's something that we're, that we're working on. But having said that, I don't want to take away, I don't want to change these exhibits, the, the actual PD Amendment Three states that these are the conditions as of 2013. And so we're not showing, the fact that the PD from 2013 reflects the grading out there today does not mean that the topography is based upon the grading there today. It means just that we built the project based upon the plans that were approved back in 2013. We have, where we have existing conditions, we reference that the existing conditions I may not be finding it right now, but there is a reference to existing conditions, and in the PD, you can confirm with your staff, there's a reference to existing conditions relate to the 2013 condition.
That's correct. We require, we requested that the base map or the existing conditions actually show the date, otherwise it's confusing to update an existing conditions plan in 2016 with conditions that aren't reflective of existing conditions anymore, so.
Can I just interrupt and ask a question?
I'm done, yes.
The squirrel's kind of falling asleep in the wheel at this hour, so I'm trying, having trouble keeping up with you. So you're, you're planning to restore, to return the soil to the same height and elevation that it was prior to the excavation, is that what you're saying?
That's correct. The soil within the building setback and buffer.
Okay, okay. And you're working with town staff to achieve that and do it to their specifications?
Yes, but this, that's not part of this PD, and in fact, we don't want to change this PD, because it might in fact make it seem like we did something that wasn't approved.
I understand. I just, I think, just for the sake of the residents who are obviously very focused on this, we're just asking, is that the current game plan, and are you working toward that?
That's absolutely our plan and our intent. And we're, in fact, happy about it. I mean, it's going to be a good thing for our residents.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, I'm done, thank you very much. I guess that actually concludes all my comments, thank you for your time.
All right, thanks, Randy. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I very much apologize. We have a meeting that we need to get to in San Diego tomorrow morning, so we have a late flight out of the airport. Would it, would it be okay if we leave at this time? Will there be any more questions of us?
No more questions from me. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
No more final comments from the public. Hearing none, I think we can go ahead and close the public meeting at this time, public hearing.
Can staff make a quick clarification?
Yes.
Or did you guys have any other questions for me?
No, I didn't think so. I think we're ready to move to discussion.
Can I make a quick clarification?
Yes.
Just on something that Mr. Goodson had said. I just didn't want the, it seems like he, he's under the impression that we have a resolution going forward to you with two conditions on it, and I don't want to make, I want to make sure that no one, it's, it's a different resolution than what you guys saw before, where staff had 10 conditions. Staff's intent, and I don't know if I clarified it enough in my presentation, was basically to tee up the potential concerns for you guys to address and arrive at your own conditions, should you feel that they, they exist or they be merited. But it wasn't necessarily suggested they should go forward with just what's reflected in the resolution today, so.
Okay, all right, thanks.
I hope that's clear. And if you guys have any questions on any of the changes, or the residential typologies, I think is really the, the big source of new changes and potential concerns, you're welcome to ask them too.
Okay, sounds good. Comments from the commission? Who, who would like to go first? Don't everybody talk a lot? This is a first, that nobody has anything.
Well, I think we're all just kind of overwhelmed a little bit, how's that?
You know, I'm gonna have to agree, that's a lot of information all at once. Appreciate that staff has taken the amount of time to prepare us and get information to us, and it's been very helpful. Well, thank you, Mr. Williams. The first comment that I would have is that the plan that has been proposed seems like it is an overall benefit to the project in general. The concern that I have, and kind of the question that I brought up, but maybe needed more clarification, was whether or not there would be lots within those blocks that would be combined to accommodate the new housing proposals, the townhomes, the six to 12-unit townhomes specifically. And if that was the case, would that also be changing the previous PD? And would it require the applicant to come back yet again, asking for approval for those lots within those blocks to be combined?
Do we want to respond to that? Do you want a clarification? If I, if I get you right, those, those blocks, to be honest with you, have no lots on them. We have only plotted up to this point, blocks. So we're not into the, we haven't gotten to the lot part yet. We will have to do that with any one particular developer in any one particular block. And then that lotting pattern will be related to their product. So we're not constrained at this point with a bunch of lots that have to be done away with and start over.
Perfect.
Does that answer your, does that get to it?
Yes, that does, thank you. I'm clear on that now, so.
All right. I, I have a couple of comments. And this echoes, I think, what we talked about previously back in, in the November meeting. But the, you know, the change from Amendment Two to now Amendment Three, at least for the core of the town center, which is the Section Two, allowed for more flexible space to give the developer, and whoever the builders are that are going to build the project out, the flexibility to, you know, meet the demands of the marketplace. And I think that the residential typologies that are being proposed here now for, for Planning Area Two and Planning Area Three seems to echo that as well. And I certainly didn't realize that just kind of the construction defect, you know, litigation and condominium aspect of just the marketplace was, was putting, you know, constraints on finding people to actually come here and build the project out, that the town has already decided is what the town wants and is in the best interests of the town. So I think that, from a, from a planning perspective, I think that these residential typologies, you know, although initially I thought single-family homes in that area seemed a little strange, I think with the explanation of Mr. Goodson, it seems that it'll certainly give more flexibility to attract the types of builders that are necessary to actually build out the town center in a reasonable period of time. So I, I think that's, that's one point. As, as to, you know, the, the buffer issue, I certainly appreciate, you know, all the comments that we've received from the citizens, and, you know, I appreciate the explanation from Mr. Goodson again tonight. I guess my, my thinking is, looking at the existing Amendment One and Two, it seems that, you know, that buffer issue was already, you know, dealt with previously by the Board of Trustees, and adopted, and relied upon for, for planning, you know, this, this whole town center. And that this Amendment Number Three, in my opinion, shouldn't be held up, because it is consistent with, you know, that which has already been voted upon and approved by the, the town board and the planning commission twice. So, you know, with respect to, you know, where the road goes, and whether it's to the east or to the west of the pond, how, how big the buffer needs to be, I think this has been consistent through at least 2013, and continues to be so. That said, I, I appreciate Mr. Goodson's commitment to, you know, recognize what the concerns are of the citizens to restore the buffer, and that he intends to do so, and actually thinks it'll, it'll, you know, be a win-win in the best interests of the town, because it'll please the residents, as well as enable, you know, his, his development to have, you know, better views and, and what have you. So I'm encouraged by that, but I don't see that the buffer issue is any reason for us not to vote for approving this Amendment Number Three at this point. And I don't have any, any comments right now on, on the additional conditions to, to place on that motion, except that which the staff has already suggested to us.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Eaton?
I was just wondering if it would be possible to get Mr. Goodson to put in writing what he said here tonight. In other words, so that the people, the citizens who are upset with it, would at least have something in hand that says that he is going to correct it. I don't know.
Can we hold him to his word? It was on record.
Well, what you can do is make it a condition of approval, that, that there's follow-through.
You can put something in writing subsequently?
I just think it would be nice to have it in writing.
I think probably the residents would agree with that.
Well, yeah.
What are, what are your thoughts on that, gentlemen?
What has been decided between the trustees and the developer in that regard? I mean, if that's something that's already been worked up between the two of them, I don't see why adding to it is going to make any difference. I think they have to refer to that base arrangement. In other words, if there's some, if there's some kind of a deal or arrangement already in the hop, or I don't want us to impose something which holds everything up, because that's already worked out, or apparently worked out.
Yeah. Jerry, do you have any thoughts on that?
How, how would we get him to write something subsequently? We would amend the resolution in front of us for tonight? And vote it down?
I guess I'm, I'm generally not in favor of coupling the two issues. You know, I, I agree with Commissioner Lasas, and, you know, we talked about this in November. I'm very encouraged to hear the commitment that, that this is being worked out, and I, that's my understanding as well, from talking with the board and with town staff. Now, I, I think it may be not well thought out to hold up the advancement of this amendment, assuming we're satisfied with the other pieces, just because we have the, the leverage. Certainly, the town board has the ultimate leverage, and my understanding is they're prepared to exercise it to make sure that this gets done, so. Those are my two cents.
Let me interject as well. You know, I, I believe that there is a commitment. Let me interject as well. You know, I believe that there is a commitment by the developer to rectify this, whatever this may be. It sounds like everything was done within parameters set forth by our board and by our mayor. So, I really appreciate the fact that he is willing to step up and address some of these needs that the residents have. The other thought that I had on it and that I wanted to interject is that I also believe that our town staff is pretty invested and committed to making sure that this project is handled well and that there would be whatever enforcement of getting this done that needs to be done by our town staff. And I feel pretty confident that the, our staff is able to do that. I agree that based on what the concerns are, for me, there isn't enough evidence or enough reason to hold up this project and pursue this any further. I think that the proposal that has been put before us, for me, seems to meet the needs of our town and of our residents in the bigger picture. And I, at this point, I would support moving forward with this PD and, or this amendment. Then just rely on the commitment from our staff to address the other issues that are in front of us.
I have one additional just question for staff, actually. On the town's website, where all the various PD amendments reside, there's a conceptual plan dated December fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, that is, deals with that whole buffer zone slope area and has, you know, slope enhancements. Do you know the document I'm talking about?
I believe I, I mean, I can't see what you're referring to, but I believe I do.
And I know that there's been discussions between the developer and the town as to how to, you know, go about remedying the buffer zone, you know, separate and apart from, you know, dealing with it in the amendment to the PD. And I'm just curious as to, because we haven't seen this document, to my knowledge, in a planning commission meeting, and I was just curious as to, is this what the developer and town have been talking about with that? Or is that something else?
From what I understand, that what you're holding is what the town discussed with the Town Board or as the town manager discussed with the Town Board in December as potential remedies for the gradient and the buffer that occurred. And those show like three alternatives or something like that.
Right, option one, option two, option three.
And they have some retaining walls and that type of stuff. So, that was the initial, you know, I guess, direction was to go figure out what we can do to restore this area. And the new direction as of this, you know, this month or the last few weeks is just to restore the area to what, I mean, so no retaining walls, no trail features or anything like that. Just simply restore the area to what was, you know, where, to return the soil that was excavated in, so. And so, that's different from what you're looking at.
Okay. I'm sorry, but we're not gonna reopen it for public comment. This is, at this point, we've already closed the public hearing. But if there are further comments among the commission here.
Have we addressed, you know, all of staff's concerns? Are there some that we need to talk about more?
I mean, I guess, it's up to you. It's, I mean, I don't know whether or not I did a good enough job kind of highlighting the changes in the residential typologies. I think it's a complicated discussion, and I may not have, you know, explained it enough for you guys. But the residential typologies, I think, in short, are conditions or criteria that we normally see at the time of a final development plan. And I don't have the history of what exhibits or diagrams went into establishing them as they are. We're not, or the applicant's not proposing any new type of conditions, but they are proposing to change them. And reducing certain restrictions and, you know, eliminating others, that's all very kind of a complicated decision that staff is used to seeing once we have a final development plan, once we have site plans. It's not just, I mean, building elevations and the floor plans that were shown today are helpful, but they were just shown today. So, they weren't part of the submittal, weren't part of the review. Staff didn't have a lot to go off of to kind of contextualize the changes that are proposed. So, those are areas that, I mean, have impact and have character changes, like alley loaded, you know, restrictions being removed. And as Fred mentioned earlier, you know, clusters of buildings going from, you know, two or three per unit or per complex to being either unlimited or six to twelve, those do change the character of the area, as does allowing single-family homes within the core area or allowing multifamily units within the Planning Area Three. So, whether or not you guys are comfortable with those changes, I mean, and I guess the other thing I didn't quite get into was just the potential changes for, or the potential opportunities to discuss those. We could either discuss them now, as we kind of have on a certain level, or we could defer them to final development plans, in which time a PD amendment could be processed concurrently, which is one option we kind of encouraged the developer to go towards. He prefer, for his reasons that he explained, to have this stuff done now so that he and, like, his potential buyers and future developers know what they can and can't do. So, they kind of get entitled to develop these things on certain blocks and lots. It's a lot to digest without additional information.
You know, I think, I think that puts, you put your finger on a thing that gives me a little bit of heartburn. That I, I'm kind of reluctant for us to take action that might somehow bind the board or the town down the road. I'm assuming, you know, we, if we were to approve this as recommended, it goes to the board, the board has to decide whether to approve it or not. The developer comes back with FDPs as he develops these lots, I assume, flats. And if the, you know, the elevations and so forth don't comport with the design guidelines, there'll be an opportunity to crutch that then. But I really am a little, I guess, a little nervous about, I understand the need to get interest from builders and demonstrate to them that they can, they can actually make it a go here. But I'm a little bit nervous to committing the town to, you know, approving, for example, a twelve-unit building when the thought was that we would have four units in smaller, smaller buildings. So, could you comment on that, or do you have any thoughts on that?
Talking to me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I kind of feel the same way. I feel that there may not be any concern. We just don't have the context. I don't feel like we have the context to make those decisions yet. And they somehow were made back in the day because some of that detail's in here. And that's one of the, I guess, one of the other solutions that staff, you know, try to encourage their developer to go towards was to just, you know, come through with a proposal to relax a lot of those conditions so that there wasn't as much specificity. But he wants, or they want the specificity in order to ensure potential builders that they can, you know. I see it as, you know, maybe too specific at a PD stage, and he needs it. So, there's just this rub here. But I'm kind of with you. I just don't feel entirely comfortable making certain changes. And they may not be, they may be completely supportable. We just don't know yet.
Fred, did you have some comment on that?
I'll just comment. We have asked for rationales, more rationales on these typologies of why they got to where they are with them. And it's been difficult getting that out of them. And I don't know why. It may be time, who knows what. But we had, what I, what we were thinking of is that what they did tonight was to show some examples. And that's very helpful for everyone that are analyzing, trying to analyze this thing and try to convey, you know, some sort of a level of understanding if this is okay or not okay. And so, it, that's been, it would have been nice if they'd have taken some time to, at least even in part of their submittal, to have a summary of these different typologies that are working in different places. Here's a twelve-foot wide unit, and this is how it works, stuff like that. And for us, that didn't quite happen up to this point. So, that's sort of kind of where we are.
I mean, I guess the thing to remember is the developers already got PD Amendment Number Two with everything that is applicable. And, you know, these, so, I mean, things are going forward in one way or the other. And, you know, with this amendment, what's being facilitated is builders, the developers' ability to, you know, market this development to, you know, entice developers and other builders. And, you know, I think that that's a valid consideration. And I have to really defer to his knowledge of the industry as to, you know, what helps him, you know, market to a hotel that's gonna come into a Town Center development or to a builder who's going to build row homes or townhomes. And I think, you know, if there's one thing that I know, it's that, you know, everybody on this commission, town staff, everybody on the board, and Mr. Goodson, as well as the citizens of Superior, want the Town Center to be as good as it can be. And when I look at the sum total of this proposed Amendment Number Three, with these additional residential typologies, I feel like we're moving the ball forward more so than, you know, backwards in any way. Or any sort of concerns that I have are really outweighed by, I think, the benefits that are afforded by moving this amendment forward.
However, I do hear what you're saying, Chairman Sawtell. It's interesting that if you're trying to attract potential buyers or developers, you would, it seems like you would want more flexibility than less. And these are quite a bit more specific than what was originally proposed. So, I don't know. I'm a little bit confused by that, but, so, I do hear, you know, what you're saying there.
But all the areas have been rezoned now into mixed use. I think that that's the flexibility, right? So, it's just various typologies within a mixed use as opposed to commercial, residential zoning areas.
And some changes to the site plan are very good. Moving Creekview Way and things like that. They've improved the site plan and given some flexibility, like Commissioner Lassus said, to that core area.
It also seems like it reduces the number of residents that would be living within the Town Center. I don't know by how much, but if you're reducing the number of units, you probably reduce the number of residents living there.
So, just to clarify, I don't think there's any reduction to any of the units being proposed. It's just the, how they get developed. So, there's, I mean, there's an overarching maximum. I think it's fourteen hundred dwelling units that are allowed throughout the Town Center, and there's no change to that at all. It's just how they are configured and how they are laid out through the property and how they're clustered, what setbacks they have, what spaces for open space and how they're accessed, that type of stuff.
And am I correct that that will come back to us in an FDP? And we ultimately would be able to look at that?
You'd have that detail at that FDP, but the parameters are being established now, I mean, so.
So, in other words, if they come back with an FDP and it fits within these parameters, we don't have a basis to object at that point?
I think you could raise concerns, but I don't know what legally.
Yeah, and that kind of gets at the tension again, is approving the specifics in the PD plan that's before you is essentially the developer's right to come back with a plan that's within those parameters and have it approved, assuming it meets all the other criteria. If the FDP were to come back, for example, and all of the, like, the requested build-out was at all the maximums, then there might be some room to say that's not the intent of what was approved in the PD. But as far as the ranges that are being requested, if they're approved now, those are the ranges that apply at the FDP stage.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Liz. Additional thoughts?
I guess my last thought is, you know, I think we need to be cognizant of, we want this thing to be built, right? And I think worse, the worst thing that could happen would be for it to be stopped and just not completed. And we have this, you know, bunch of dirt with Boulder Valley ice sitting there by itself and a vision not realized. And I don't think that that's a possibility. But, you know, I think that if there's demand, you know, by the builders to, you know, be a part of this, you know, that's a good thing for the town.
Yeah.
And, you know, we want to be, you know, cognizant of, you know, what is driving, you know, market demand. And, you know, we want to encourage people to want to build in the Town Center. The Town Board, the Planning Commission, has already, you know, approved this vision and at a certain point in time. You know, we're already on the train, and it's moving down the tracks. And we need to just now, I think, defer to the expertise of the developer and, you know, the property owner and help him see through his vision. And I think he's got a great vision, and he wants this to be a spectacular Town Center. I think it will be. So, I don't see anything in these particular, you know, residential typologies that really gives me pause that says, oh, there's something here that I really am going to regret.
No, that part doesn't bother me. I agree. I mean, I, I think the typologies are good. I know when we originally started talking about this, we wanted it to be different. We wanted it to have different opportunities. The idea was to create a center that people could afford to live there and shop and go to the ice rink, and maybe if we're lucky, we'll get a theater. You know, there are just all kinds of things that were talked about initially. And I think we should give the go-ahead at this point because we certainly don't want it to stop, and we don't want it to go away. I don't think we're taking any chances. I think that if staff thought there was a real problem, staff would say, well, we're not recommending. But I, I don't know. What do you think, Liz? Do you think it's a good idea to move forward?
I think it is entirely up to the commission and the town to decide if the proposed changes are within the vision of what the town wishes to propose. I just want the commission to know that what is approved in the PD plan is what the developer can be expected to come back to with an FDP. And as long as the FDP is consistent with the PD plan and the town code, there is not the grounds to deny the FDP at that stage.
That's helpful, Liz.
Thanks.
I'm looking at all these typology changes as basically wanting to increase their flexibility and who they can market it to. And that encourages the development, so I think I'm in favor of those. By giving you more range that you can do something in, more flexibility you can do something in, now you can attract different kinds of solutions to a given block or whatever. I think that's in the best interests of moving forward. I agree, it's a lot of information all at once, but I think I can see what he's up to. he's up to.
Do you have thoughts?
I, I do. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Williams on putting all this together. This is an enormous amount of information.
Yeah, thanks.
Absolutely.
I, I think keeping RC Superior's feet to the fire about the buffer zone is essential. I think the town staff can help in that and, uh, making sure his words tonight are echoed to the town board and that, uh, you know, we as a board keep his feet to the fire. It's a, it's a very sensitive issue for a lot of people and it affects their home values. So, um, it's glad to hear that. I, uh, all, all the different types of properties you can build in there, I think the more the merrier. The, the more choices they have, the, the builders that can come in here, the better. To derail this resolution, I don't think is a good idea. I think we need to keep the ball moving forward. As, as a Realtor, years ago, I was selling houses up in Erie Village. Any of you are familiar with Erie Village? The, the commercial side of Erie Village collapsed and it was never built. I don't know if it's built today yet. And that was probably ten years ago. And it affected the construction of the subsequent homes and it dropped the value of all the homes that were already there tremendously. So, I think, uh, keeping this, moving forward is, is the right way to go. Keeping this, uh, the developers, uh, keeping him to his word about the buffer zone, that that needs to get corrected and, and restored or repaired or replaced, however you want to say it. And, uh, the, uh, one thing that concerns me is the, the, what was it, the height restrictions, the mass of, uh, putting a ninety-foot hotel right in the middle, literally in the middle of the town center where it would cast, it would cast a shadow on everything to the, what's it, the north? As, as the sun goes over. I think I'd like to see a hotel, you know, in the top right corner of that, what is that?
Block seven.
Block seven?
What are you talking about?
You know, 'cause the, the-
Here instead of here?
Correct, yes.
That's block seven, yeah.
Yep. And it'd have more exposure to thirty-six like the other hotel would. And, and it wouldn't cast as much of a shadow physically across the development. But that, I think, along with the subsequent FDPs that are gonna come through where we had that discussion with it. But I don't see any reason to slow this down, no. But, I mean, ur- urban centers have buildings of different heights and there's gonna be a shadow. And just look at, look at downtown Denver right now and there's people that have terrific views who won't have terrific views in a couple of years because there's a couple of sky, skyscrapers going up, uh, you know, across the street. So, you know, things, things change and, um, I, I, I'm not really concerned about, about that. But, you know, what, what Jerry said that I, that I am concerned about and I think we need to be sensitive about is, is that example with the Erie development. You know, when, when the commercial side of it, uh, collapsed, everybody suffered. And, and we need to look at this as to, uh, you know, through, through the, the lens of what's in the best interest of the town and, and what's in the best interest of the town is to do this correctly. And, and there are a lot of different things in play with putting together a development of, of this size and scale.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, I, I, I want to be sensitive to the, the residents as well and, and to their property values and, and, uh, to the restoration of the buffer. But, you know, I, I certainly don't want to hold up the, the process because, I mean, that could just completely derail, uh, you know, many of the aspects. I mean, if, if all of a sudden there's builders that are, you know, ready to sign contracts and then all of a sudden this, this PD amendment doesn't go through and then, then they, they decide to go elsewhere, um, that can, you know, gravely affect, you know, the success of, of this development.
I'm gonna blame Liz if that happens.
Well, let's face it, there's a lot of elsewheres they could go, so we need to try to-
That, that's a very good point. I think you're right. I agree.
I have one question, though, Stephen. I saw, at least I think I saw, that ninety feet is three stories?
No.
Five to six?
Ninety feet would be, I don't know if it's five to six or five to seven, but we can look at it.
There was a diagram that-
Ninety feet's three to six. As, as-
Three to six or three?
Three to six.
Three to six stories.
Okay.
Can you, can you just tell us how tall the Boulder Valley Ice Arena is?
I wish I could, that's a good question.
Just trying to visualize what ninety feet looks like.
I wanna say, oh, we, well, we know the, the max limitation over here. This suggests it's seventy-five, but I don't think it got built quite that tall. I think it's like sixty or sixty-five.
More like in the fifties, at the fifty to sixty, I don't think it's-
Fifty to sixty, yeah.
I think that's fif-
Max of fifty-five.
Do you know how tall the BVI building is?
Oh, yeah.
There you go.
So add seventeen feet. And that could shoot up to eighty. Add another ten to that and it could shoot to ninety. So it's basically like adding a two-story house, three-story house on top of the highest threshold.
So if we were to look at other hotels in the area, um, would there be a, an appropriate comparison to the ninety feet?
Vocally, I don't know that there is. I mean, I know that the ones in Louisville are not nearly that tall. I think as Commissioner Lacy has mentioned, uh, you're talking more about something in a much more urban environment, uh, maybe downtown Denver, uh, ninety feet tall.
But, I mean, a hotel like the Westin is way much taller than that, is it not?
Which Westin?
The Westin?
Westminster?
In Westminster?
Uh, that one's gotta be at least a hundred and twenty.
Yeah, I don't-
Yeah.
But that's some data that we could look into and have for, uh, uh, town board's consideration, if you like.
Can I ask a point of procedure? I'm not suggesting this is how this should go, but could we defer, uh, a decision on this until we gather up a little more information along these lines if we decide we need more, more information?
Defer the planning commission's decision?
Yes.
Let me check the code really quick, but I believe your options are, um, when you have the application in front of you, approve, deny, or approve with recommended conditions. And actually, that's, that's simply a recommendation of approval, a recommendation of denial, a recommendation of approval with conditions.
Because ultimately, the board's gonna have to make those decisions.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, next, Liz.
And before the, the commission wraps up its, um, discussion, there's, there's two issues that I wanted to, um, you know, put before you that have been ongoing in the background and, and definitely communicated to, um, the applicant, um, both in November now and will be communicated again, um, as the amendment three goes to the board. The first is that if you look at the cover page to the amendment three, um, it excludes block twelve from the, the amendment. Block twelve is BVI. The way that, that PD zoning works is that it's, it's a, a PD zone of all the properties within the zone and then the uses, um, are determined on the particular areas within the entire zone. So whether it's a single ownership or multiple ownerships, when an amendment comes back to a PD zone, all owners, all properties need to sign on. And typically how that works is all owners are applicants. In this case, BVI is not an, a co-applicant with, um, RC Superior and actually, block twelve is purported to be excluded from the legal description of the area in the PD. So it, it presents the issue of, of going forward, if this is approved, is block twelve left out without zoning, um, if that makes sense? It's, it's not so much an issue because BVI has submitted a letter of consent essentially to the changes and none of the changes in the, um, third amendment before you actually affect directly block twelve. But theoretically, because it's part of the larger PD, changes requested in other areas, because it's a comprehensively zoned, um, area of land, in theory could affect block twelve, that particular property. So that's why, um, all properties, all owners, um, should be applicants and should sign off on it. Um, BVI has given consent, but notwithstanding, if block twelve is excluded and, and the third amendment is approved, then it, it opens the, the question of whether block twelve is, is left without zoning, if that makes sense. It's not, it's not really a risk for the town so much as it is a risk, um, potentially for BVI.
Do we know why block twelve was excluded?
We have told and, and communicated and, and asked the applicant, um, uh, that block twelve needs to be included, that BVI should be, um, included on the cover page. Um, and that's still an ongoing, um, communication and certainly communicating to, to BVI that, that this is the case. And that's, that's where the letter from BVI came from consenting to the, the changes in PD amendment three. But it still doesn't quite, that consent still doesn't quite, um, get at the issue of if PDA three is approved, um, without block twelve included in, in the legal, um, and within the, the PDA area, that does that mean that it, it is left without current zoning, if that makes sense? So that's an ongoing, um, communication with, with the applicant on how to, um, make sure that, that issue is, is addressed and covered and, and it will be, um, put before the board and addressed before, uh, approval of the, the third amendment. But I wanted to, to raise it, it with the commission now. The second issue, um, if you flip to, is it CS one four, the allowed uses page, um, this kind of goes along with the whole, uh, overall purpose of, of PD zoning. Uh, I think it's a little sooner than all this, right?
That's what I thought, but I must have skipped over it.
Three, four, did you just pass it?
There it is.
There we go. So if we zoom into the allowed uses box up towards the top, this essentially is, is outlining the allowed uses within the PD, different areas of the PD zone. Like any other, uh, zoned area, this needs to contain a list of, of allowed permitted uses, um, and, and I believe it contains conditional uses as well. I can't particularly see this. But the, the issue with this, this box here is that the, there's the language including but not limited to in the list of allowed uses, which essentially defeats the purpose of, of having a list of allowed uses. If, if we're gonna have a, a, as areas zoned PD and then designate areas within the PD zone where particular uses are allowed and to what extent, if we have the language including but not limited to, it, it essentially-
Yeah.
-means that this is an exemplary list and not a list of, of the allowed uses, period. So we have asked, uh, the applicant and are working with the applicant to move that, remove that language. And, and again, that's sort of an ongoing background issue, um, since this has been submitted, but wanted to, to put that before the commission as well.
Is that on the cover page? Is it, where, I mean, where, where do you find that language?
This is sheet CS one dot four.
CS one dot four.
It's the seventh sheet of the, well, it's the seventh sheet of the amended, uh, copy. We can figure out what-
Let's just say hypothetically, uh, an FDP comes up and, and somebody's proposing a, a use that's not there. That, you know, I mean, it, it isn't identified. Would that be grounds for us to deny the FDP?
It says including but not limited to.
But that doesn't mean that it's necessarily allowed. It just means that it's not necessarily limited to. I think we would still have-
If it's not in the list of prohibited uses and, and it's essentially not clear whether it's- I mean, I think there's a good argument that if it's not prohibited, even if it's not in the express list of allowed uses because it's including but not limited to, that it's an allowed use.
One thing I noted about that, Mark, is on the prohibited lu- uses list is a medical marijuana dispensary, but nowhere is, is it mentioned about, uh, what's regular-
Retail dispensary?
Retail marijuana? A retail marijuana dispensary? So, I think, uh, not limited to, that anyway. We could face some, some FDP like that. They, they clearly said no medical, but they haven't said no to a retail. Right. Although retail is prohibited by town code, isn't it? All, isn't all marijuana prohibited in Superior?
Yes.
Right, I thought, yeah, I thought the town has already excluded any marijuana business from happening in Superior.
Is the not limited to language a change from the prior amendment?
No, it's always been in there and we've always asked for it to come out.
And if this language is a carryover from, you know, the, the previous amendment, you know, we only had medical marijuana before two thousand, I guess, fourteen. So if this is carryover from two thousand thirteen, that's why it says medical marijuana and then, then the retail marijuana got legalized in twenty fourteen with amendment sixty-four. And, but, I mean, if it's still prohibited by town code, I guess, you know, that does give me heartburn.
And if you, if you look at, at any other zone district in the code, the way it works is the list of allowed uses, the, what's prohibited, and sometimes it doesn't even say prohibited because if it's not listed, it by default is prohibited. Or it's identified potentially as a conditional or special use in which you have to come back and either get a special use permit or it's conditional if you meet the conditions upon, according to the town upon which that use would be appropriate. So zoning simply works by, there's a list of allowed uses, conditional and special, and if it's not there, it's not a use by right. So this, this list of, of allowed uses to be including but not limited to, um, just doesn't jive with essentially a list of zoning uses and opens the door for, um, a lot more than is arguably contemplated on that list.
And I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, but, um, you said this language is in the prior, the prior amendment, but this would be an opportunity for us to clean it up?
Correct. The including but not limited to language, yes.
Okay.
So could that be a recommendation?
We can make-
No, we can condition, right? We could place conditions on this.
You don't want us to do that?
No, no, I don't see any reason not to do it. I mean, it, it seems like that's a-
I mean, if, if that's one way to get it out of them.
If there's a latent ambiguity in the document and we've got prohibited uses and then we've got allowed uses and then we've got-
Let's fix it.
But not limited to use.
Limbo.
Yeah.
That we can't quite figure out what it would be, but it seems like we potentially, would, would an applicant then have to, say we had one of those limbo categories, get a use by special review or something like that to, to get-
I think an applicant would have a strong argument that it's a use by right. If it's, if it's not identified as a special use or a conditional use and it's not prohibited, there's a strong argument that it's a use by right.
And is the town code, uh, does the town code give us any guidance on, on that particular issue here?
This is, this would be the controlling language because this is the zoning code essentially for the area of land that's described in the, the PD plan. So as far as guidance on what's a, what's a permitted use and what's not a permitted use, it's this language.
But I think what Commissioner Lacy is asking is if we remove the but not limited to, how would we, uh, address an application that didn't fit exactly within these realms? Would we process it as a special use review or something? And I think the answer is we would have to do a PD amendment. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is that your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, I guess kind of following up on that with respect to block twelve, I mean, we could- in theory, make it a condition of approval that Block 12 be included in the PD amendment?
And is there a reason for not doing that, that just Boulder Valley Ice actually owns that property?
I honestly don't understand the underlying reasons for why Boulder Valley Ice is not included as an applicant in this proposal and hasn't been added, or why the Block 12 is purported to be excluded from the legal description. If it's within the legal description and we at least have the letter of consent, then at least we have clear zoning for the property and the owner's consent, notwithstanding the fact that BVI is not a co-applicant. But here, there's the exclusion of Block 12 in the legal description and a lack of BVI being a co-applicant, if that makes sense.
But it is in the PD, correct?
It is part of the PD. The only explanation that I've received as to why they're not on the application as a signature block is the precedent that it would set for future PD amendments when there are multiple, multiple property owners rather than just one or two right now. Three, I guess, right now.
Didn't you mention that the town was going to be signing?
The town owns.
If the town is, why isn't BVI?
It's a great question.
It's a great question. And in every other, you know, in the early stages when the, of the project, when the property ownership was even more fractured before RC Superior, you know, consolidated ownership, all those owners signed off on the PD zoning. Because they're the owners of the property that is being zoned. So they need to consent to it and be a co-applicant.
Get all those owners to sign that.
Exactly.
Let's just say that Boulder Valley Ice sells to a new purchaser and now they don't want to operate an ice rink anymore. They want to convert it to a concert venue or something like that. We don't have any zoning on that parcel, or?
There's at least that question. It's just a situation that I don't know that has come up to really know what the answer to that is. And like I said, it's less a risk for the town, you know, in terms of approving the PD amendment with Block 12 excluded than it is for the owner of Block 12, or the future owner of Block 12, to want to do something with that property and there is then a question of what the zoning is. So that's why under, normally how these are processed is all the owners would be applicants and all the property within the PD zone is included in the legal description on the PD plans.
Well, it seems to give it certainly streamline the process of, you know, future PD amendments if we have to, you know, consider any of those or and certainly give clarity to the owner of Block 12, whether it's Boulder Valley Ice or somebody else in the future for it to be within the same PD.
Yeah, I don't really like the thought of us agreeing to kind of chop up the whole area. It doesn't seem.
Well, it doesn't make sense. And I don't know why they would, you know, be against it. Does it make sense to me why they would exclude it? Let's put it that way.
I think Stephen's right. I mean, it's up, I think we need to solve the issue over time of how to deal with multiple owners. In the marketplace, we never had more than five or six. You know, Costco had a lot and they all signed if we did a PD amendment, if they did hold title to a lot and there are those lots out there in the marketplace, it was simple. You could do that. I think we have to figure out how to deal with this down the road. And I don't know if there is an answer, but maybe we can figure it out. Because if you have now 1,400 owners, but we're still, we still have to do an amendment for a couple, three or four blocks that haven't been built because we've got issues there and it needs to be a PD amendment, that's a lot of people to try to sign this thing. There's got to be a way to deal with that. I personally don't know how, but I'm sure we can figure something out, because there are other jurisdictions in the metroplex that I'm sure had to deal with this, because she's right. Gotta, if you're in the PD, you need to be a signer. If you own property in there, you need to be a signer to any PD work that's done, it's zoning.
It kind of strikes me that we could work through those issues when they arise. It kind of strikes me that this is not one of those times where it's particularly onerous to go to one property owner and get them to sign off. That's just my, my sense of it. And then that would give us and the developer time to figure out how they're gonna deal with this as you have more and more owners out there. That's my two cents. I'm a little worried about the precedent that we're setting in saying, okay, well, it's not necessary. You know, we can carve it up as we go along. I'm just thinking about litigation and things down the road if we go down that path.
Maybe we should have it evaluated by a lawyer going in.
Well, 25, 30 years from now, you know, some associate attorney is gonna be sitting at some law firm in downtown Denver looking at a lot of documents, wondering why the hell is the Boulder Valley Ice not zoned? When they're doing the due diligence associated with the transaction. They're gonna be really puzzled because it won't make any sense.
Well, it doesn't make any sense.
Fred, do you think it would tie anybody's hands if we made that a condition of of approval?
No, because it's a recommendation.
Yeah, that's true. Well, anybody have any other comments?
Well, I was just thinking about that as this project goes on, RC Superior is gonna be selling off blocks of property.
Parts of blocks?
And parts of blocks to builders who are gonna build town homes and condos.
Who are gonna be selling to private owners.
To private owners. And at that point, RC Superior doesn't own that property anymore.
So they don't care.
And so that property is no longer part of the PD.
Well, their zoning is gonna be set by this document and the whole point is if at some point do we want to, you know, clean up the Boulder Valley Ice situation and and if we try to do it down the road versus doing it now, when we have one owner or two owners instead of 20, 50, you know, 1,400. It seems like now it's an easy fix and there's no reason really not to do it. So, you know, in terms of recommending something to the trustees, you say, yeah, we think the motion should go forward, but this is one condition. We think we should include Block 12 and remove the, in addition to the staff recommendations that we include Block 12 and we remove that ambiguous including but not limited to language.
A lot of times that's just because they can't think of every conceivable business that might be coming in here and so they leave it open, sort of cover your butt.
Well, but if if they want to come in with a request to put something there that's not on the list, then they have to present a PD to do it.
We don't want them, we don't want somebody coming down the road, opening up something that's questionable, you know, not a prohibited use.
Right.
It's not a strip club or a marijuana dispensary, but it's something else that isn't quite a permitted use, but isn't a prohibited use. Right, but that, you know, at the end of the day, people say, why didn't, why didn't we just eliminate that including but not limited to language to avoid that possibility? If somebody really wants to build that type of business or use that, you know, property for that type of use, put it on the permissible uses or come before the planning commission and town board for
Permission to do it.
Permission to do it, yeah.
So we could approve this resolution with a recommendation?
The two.
Certain things be investigated or fixed or whatever, whatever words we use.
Yeah, I think the two conditions are that Block 2 being subject to, made subject to
Block 12.
Or, yeah, Block 12, I'm sorry, be subject to and included in the PD and that the list of allowable uses seen on page CS 1 dot four would strike the language including but not limited to.
And then also include the planning staff's conditions on page 17 memo, which is just the minor technical red line corrections and number two note four on building mass diagram shall be edited.
So can you clarify the first note that I guess you wanted to be added? Or is it just the two that I've actually stated? Okay, because I wanted to revisit, I mean, you guys have seemingly clarified that none of the changes within the individual residential typologies need to be amended, but the note that they're asking to be added to that page that basically states that this update updates the design guidelines without actually going through the exercise of updating, that's how I read that, is that the design guidelines don't need to be updated or wouldn't be updated. They would just be effectively updated by the sheet. And as Randy indicated in his discussion, there's like 21 pages that reference these residential typologies that should, should or should not be updated based on that note. So however you guys want to.
Well, maybe I misheard him, but I thought his, his plan, I don't know if it was him or if it was Bill.
He stated in there that he was gonna update it, but this note suggests otherwise. So I don't know if you want to stricken the note or?
I guess my, my understanding of that is they plan to update it, but they want to be able to rely on this SP 2 dot 2 red lines, so then they can go out to the builders and say, this is what we've got and this is what you're allowed to do and we're gonna amend the design guidelines accordingly. That was, that was my understanding.
He said he was gonna do it, but we're wanting, we're wanting them very badly to do this and so we're suggesting that we have, we deal with that sentence in there that
So you want to strike that sentence?
Yeah, we want them to update these design.
Right, so that second bullet basically says this plan sheet updates these design guidelines, which to me suggests that the design guidelines won't effectively get updated. They'll just, this sheet will supply that.
It's gonna be very confusing.
Either it could be more clear or you can strike it altogether and then make a condition of approval that they actually be updated.
So what would make sense would be that these design guidelines
Provide the basis for updating them or something?
You know, or are to be used to provide a comprehensive update to the design guidelines. But that this document in and of itself does not supersede and amend and replace the design guidelines.
Something to that effect and something that actually, I guess, also clarifies that the design guidelines will need to be updated to reflect these changes, something like that.
Yeah, reflect the plan set and anything else that's associated with it. Because it's gonna be very confusing not updating the guidelines and having this new PD plan set. Because we want developers to be clear that, okay, you're using these design guidelines and you're also looking at this plan set which has been approved. And they are, then they match. If they don't match, this creates all kinds of.
And I believe that that's what they said they intend to do. So you just want to make sure that
I want to make sure they do that.
Okay, that's
Yeah, because obviously.
Well, and part of the exercise of this update was to clarify discrepancies, so we certainly don't want to create one when we're clarifying a bunch of others. We're making progress other ways, so.
And we, of course, never, we haven't seen this until tonight. When did you first receive these?
Those sheets are in the plan supplemental that I distributed to you guys, but it's, yeah. Those are just, I cut them out so that they would be easier to review.
So then these are precursor to the formal design guidelines changes, right?
Correct. Do you guys have copies of the design guidelines?
I do, but I think.
They're online too, but, no? Just want to make sure.
Unless I know we're gonna talk about it.
Three recommendations, three conditions.
Three conditions.
Right, and I would, I would like to, just so it's clear on the record, kind of read back what I have for those three. And right now I just have two, because I didn't catch the last one about the deleting the note. But in addition to technical and red line corrections and the recommended condition on note four on the building mass diagram to correct the language regarding height versus allowance, we will add a recommended condition C to the proposed resolution that in the cover sheet CS 1 dot zero, applicant shall delete the language excluding and accepting their from Block 12. And we are adding a proposed condition D in the table of Allowed Uses on Plan Sheet CS 1 dot four, figure H, the language including but not limited to shall be deleted.
In all instances or something to that effect?
Yeah, how many, how many places is it shown?
And while they're there, maybe they should just add retail marijuana is prohibited as well?
Couldn't hurt.
You have to go to Louis' Hall for it. I think it's next to noodles in the, in the ink shop.
There you go.
One, two, three. I think actually you only want to cut but not limited to, so including all these things. But not limited to is the language we need to cut, so it's one, two, three, four.
Oh, yeah, just the, we want it to include. Okay, so in the table of Allowed Uses on Plan Sheet CS 1 dot four, figure H, the language but not limited to, shall be deleted in all instances.
Should we add retail marijuana to the prohibited uses or is that an overreach?
Or is that already in our town code?
I just think it's
It is? It is not?
Well, I mean, if the medical marijuana is there and the medical marijuana was there, because that's all that existed back when this original document was reflected and then our constitution was amended to allow for retail marijuana, notwithstanding the ordinance, which my understanding exists, it just seems like it would be probably a wise thing to do. Unless the planning commission really wants to buy retail marijuana.
Medical, I'd say marijuana. Dispensary.
I'm trying to see if I can find the ordinance on our system regarding marijuana. If it's banned throughout the town, it's not necessary to put it in the list for everybody to use it.
Or they could just strike, strike medical? Just say marijuana dispensaries?
But a retail shop and a dispensary are two different things.
No, but if it just says marijuana dispensaries?
Marijuana sales, let's put it that way.
Liz, are you saying we don't need to do that or what's your thought?
Without being able to pull up the ordinance in front of me right now, I can most likely confirm that the town has passed an ordinance prohibiting retail marijuana. Unless you recall when the ordinance was passed. I just, I just don't want to say with certainty that the town has passed an ordinance that I don't have in front of me. But if the town has passed such an ordinance, okay, then it's, then it's not necessary to add that to the prohibited use.
They're gonna get it anyway. Actually, I'm all for it.
Either that or just look for a big cloud coming your way.
I don't have strong feelings one way or the other if, you know, whatever you guys want to do.
So how do we work this resolution now?
Let me make sure I got proposed condition E, which is the note about the design guidelines. Yeah, it's a prohibited condition of the code for any person to operate. Yeah, it's a prohibited, um, condition of the code for any person to operate, cause to be operated or permit to be operated in the town of marijuana establishment. And marijuana establishments are hereby prohibited at any location in the town. So. That would.
Leave it be.
Yeah.
That's sufficient. When was that passed?
Two thousand thirteen. And honestly, my, I may have worked on that, I just don't recall. We've done so many. All right, so back to the last condition E, uh, we were removing this note from.
Yeah.
Yeah, the second bullet point.
I think we were gonna say words to the effect that the design guidelines will be updated to, must be updated to match the details for residential typologies in the plan.
Replacing the second bullet point with that. Okay, so on.
Fred, would that, uh, would that work?
What's the sheet number?
Is, uh, to me, it's updating the design guidelines to match all the changes that this PD amendment has, uh, basically adds what it is.
Okay.
Because there's all kinds of things in there, there are another to make these coincide. There are little things and some bigger things that need to be picked, otherwise it's gonna be confusing.
Can we, can we make a more broad then list that?
Throughout the entire design guideline document, the whole thing.
Okay. So, so we want a broad condition that applicant shall, um, update the design guidelines to reflect all changes of PD amendment three and be consistent with all changes.
Yes.
So who wants to make the motion or do we have one?
We have a resolution. Anybody wanna? Okay, but we need to.
There's a nice cheat sheet here in the back of item number six. I guess one thing, maybe before we do that, um, the, at the, at the, at the meeting with the trustees this week, they had asked if we could maybe somehow summarize the gist of our conversations before we make a motion so that they can sort of find in a pretty succinct way, you know, some of the considerations, major considerations we might think about as they look at our recommendations, so. I don't know what that would be, other than the fact that Mark doesn't like marijuana dispensaries.
Well, we didn't want to embrace any concept of making, approving this and enforcing the buffer redoing or whatever you wanna call it. That we wanted, that it was more important for us to keep the project moving, knowing that there is some sort of a side deal without having to address it directly ourselves.
Well, I, I think that with, with respect to that, the buffer, um, PD amendment number one and number two, in my opinion, already addressed. And it's, it's an agreement between the town and the, the property owner as to what is going to, uh, be done in that section. So for purposes of, of considering, you know, PD amendment number three, uh, there's really nothing different in PD amendment number three that hasn't already been done in PD amendment number one and number two with respect to the buffer. I think that's, so that, that to me is the, the main consideration that, that kinda carries.
But that's respect to the buffer as it was the host of it. And then they messed it up.
But, but, but then the, the developer's already agreed that he's going to be restoring it, so I think that those are the two points that. But it's already been, it's already been dealt with, you know, kinda legally, you know, with respect to.
I'm losing control of this meeting. We need, using Gavro one in Italian.
Yeah.
So, um, getting back to the motion and in regards to the, um, conversation we had with the board, I think that part of the summary could be the conditions that we've set forth and that, you know, um, we all agree on those. And it does let them know that those are the issues that we've considered in making the decision that we're going to make. Um, in addition to that, I think we just somehow need to acknowledge that, um, we do respect what our residents are saying to us and that, you know, we've looked at that and, and taken that into consideration and we've heard, you know, several times the, the same story, but it's such a small piece of the overall, uh, development and the overall plan that, um, we, we, I, I don't feel like I can allow it to hold up, um, progress.
I, I agree.
You know, it's what, in, in respect to what Mark was saying there as well.
I, I would maybe suggest as a friendly amendment to that piece, Anthony, that we, you know, it's, it's reassuring to hear the developers state in open hearing that their plan is to restore that to the prior elevation that it was at and, and that they'll work with our staff to make sure that happens. I think it's probably worth noting that for the board because I do think the board is very focused on that issue.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I like it.
Well, subject to that, does anybody wanna take a crack at a motion?
Well, actually, this is the resolution.
Okay.
Which has to be agreed to, as I understand, right?
So it's a motion to approve.
A resolution.
Right, so we need a motion to approve the resolution.
Yeah, okay.
With the conditions, proposed conditions A through E that we discussed on the record.
Okay.
And who will help with motion, uh, A through E for us?
Okay, I move. Is that how you wanna do this? To accept the resolution number PC, series two oh one six. Resolution of the planning commission of the town of Superior recommending approval of a third amendment to the planned development, preliminary development. Plan for Superior Town Center in case number PDA dash ZDP dash two zero one five dash two, together with. Let's see, the following conditions.
And I can read those into the record. A, applicant shall make minor technical and red line changes or corrections to the plan as identified by town staff. B, note four on the building mass diagram on plan sheet CS one dot four, figure H, shall be corrected to read as follows. Building heights will vary within the maximums for buildings of three stories or above, three stories will be the maximum. Delete height, insert allowance unless, delete a height, insert an allowance above three stories is determined not to detrimentally affect the views from properties surrounding the town center. Proposed condition C, in the cover sheet CS one dot zero, applicant shall remove the language of legal description excluding and accepting there from Block Twelve. D, in the table of allowed uses on plan sheet CS one dot four, figure H, the language, quote, but not limited to, quote, shall be deleted in all instances from the lists of allowed uses. And E, applicant shall update the design guidelines supplement document as necessary to reflect consistency with the approved PD plan.
Okay, do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
That's resolution number PC dash one.
Oh, okay. All right. With that, uh, so we have a second, are those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Anless, thank you all.
Okay, I guess you gotta sign this.
Do you want me to mail it to you right now?
You have to sign that.
Okay.
And you have to put the number of votes on there.
Okay.
Okay.
So our next item is, uh, wayfinding, do we have time for wayfinding?
Uh, I can be quick, uh, I just wanted to touch base with you guys and follow up with, uh, the additional, I guess, options based on the last discussion we had, um, and from what I recall, and I forgot to bring my notes with me, and this is why I wanted to do it now, so it'd stay fresh, but, uh, you guys wanted to see the town logo included, um, in the top and you also preferred the pedestrian and bicycle, uh, both of those, uh, emblems being shown. So this kinda gives you a couple of options as to what we could see those signs look like. I think, you know, maybe this bottom option shows the most, uh, amount of information where Superior is still shown in the top, uh, as well as the town logo and the PED and, and bike path insignia in addition to, uh, a trail, uh, demarcation that says it's Coal Creek Trail. So this, this is kinda the variety of what we could, um, see going forward with a, a, a collection of, uh, potential wayfinding signs and they would be obviously installed in different locations and with different purposes. So the bike, the bike, um, uh, signal for the bike route would probably still be used in certain, uh, instances just to clarify that you are only on a bike route, uh, so the PED, uh, demarcation would not be used when you're just on a bike route, obviously. But I think the, if I'm remembering correctly, you guys preferred, uh, the blue exterior to the burgundy exterior and I wanted to make sure that that didn't change with kinda this new direction where I think a, a little bit more burgundy is gonna end up being shown on the top, whether or not you wanted the consistency with the, uh, exterior being burgundy or if it made much difference to you. Uh, but this is a collection of, I guess, uh, how the same sign could be shown and how we could still use that, uh, kinda build a sign type of, uh, mentality where if we only know one location to begin with and certain things kinda follow suit and, or follow afterwards, we could still add to those signs, uh, so that's the flexibility that we discussed. But I just wanted to get this in front of you before we went on to ProSTAC and OSSTAC for, uh, more consideration and, and that's where they'll kinda determine where signs, uh, along trails need to be installed and then what type of sign needs to get installed where, so. Real quick, but I didn't want it to, uh, wait any longer, I meant to bring it to you last, uh, hearing, so.
You just looking for feedback?
Well, any feedback or if, 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 I guess just confirmation that this is the direction that you guys provided last time, so.
Were we gonna go with the different panels as opposed to one, one sign?
Well, when we know, um, when we know all the, the destinations that we wanna include, it would be this sign. If we, if we have like the town center and then, or, you know, I don't know whether or not we're gonna be able to sign Boulder Valley Ice or anything that specific that's a business, but, you know, if, if things are to be determined or if we know that, you know, future paths are gonna be built, then we would be able to put one, um, one sign or a smaller sign and then build off of it so that we can make it more useful, use the same post essentially. Um, the other thing I wanted to throw by you that I almost forgot was just, uh, whether or not you have any preference between the two, uh, logos, ones with the white trees and the other ones kinda more of an outline. I don't know whether or not anyone cares, but.
I do, I like the darker one.
Yeah, I like the one on the middle.
I think everyone kinda washes out.
You like the dark tree versus the white tree?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I think, the, the standard one, uh, our design folks were just playing around, so.
I think the, uh, the, the round signs, the circular signs for the bicycles, uh, personally, I prefer the, the red maroon outline because I think it's kinda more consistent with the other signs. I think it just, it, it just pops a little more.
I agree with you.
That's what I was thinking after we put these together, so that's why I wanted to bring it back to you.
It's a little more uniform too in terms of the, the feel.
Okay.
But I think they look great. I really like those signs.
Are you saying the one on the left?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so this one with this collection of stuff instead, okay. That's basically, I just wanted to make sure we incorporated everything, so we'll move forward. So, no, it's been a long night, I appreciate you guys, thanks.
Do we have, uh, staff announcements or anything miscellaneous?
Uh, no meeting on the second, no, uh, other announcements that I can think of at this time.
All right, well, we're adjourned.